Good evening, Garner, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Garner Town Council, July 16, 2024. And we have an outstanding audience here this evening. I can tell people are motivated to be here, eager for knowledge, and eager to have their positions listened to. And that's what we're here to do. Thank you for being here. The meeting is called Order, and we start with a roll call.
Mayor Gupta.
Here.
Mayor Protim Vance.
Here.
Councilmember Behringer.
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
And Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
And we follow that up with the Pledge of Allegiance and Invocation led by Councilmember Kathy Behringer.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in the invocation. Father God, we come before you this evening, humbly seeking your wisdom, guidance, and healing. We ask for wisdom and guidance as we make decisions that will help us lead our town forward, and we seek your healing, restoration, and unity for our nation. We attempt to recover from the recent tragic events. Let us not be wise in our own eyes, but let us seek your wisdom and your guidance. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Behringer. And sometimes I get the opportunity to interject the thought for the day, and I don't exercise that privilege every time, but I thought I would today. And you kind of touched on it, the hard times last week. And my thought for the day is that Garner's greatest strength is our strength as a village, a village where we know our neighbors and help each other. That's who we are. And we focus on the things that we have in common, and we work around the issues that could divide us. This is just the way that we are in Garner. National events affect us. I hope that we can affect the national outlook, at least in our little corner of the world. Last Saturday, we saw a national tragedy, an attempted assassination of a presidential candidate and former president. Also, the collateral damage of a local firefighter who was protecting his own family was killed. I've seen a series of these kind of galvanizing events in my long life compared to President Kennedy's assassination in 1963, followed by the assassination of Attorney General Kennedy and civil rights leader Mark Luther King, President Reagan in 1981, a serious assassination, serious injury he pulled through, thank goodness. We saw the attack on America, 9/11/2001, that started the war on terror, and now this. It seems like every 20 years, something like this comes along. But every time, America is pulled together to get through this kind of trauma. This time, I've already seen a positive response to a terrible event. Both party leaders have pledged to avoid divisive attacks and help us promote unity. I know this won't last forever, but let's promote it while it's here. Let's focus on the unity. It's a reminder that it's time to move beyond divisiveness, hate, and violence. We have to focus on the things that bring us together. So let's share the strength of our village, know your neighbors, help each other, and spread the love, move away from the divisiveness. Thank you for everything that you'll do in your neighborhood and your community. I know I can count on you. Now, we move to petitions and comments, and I always read this little disclaimer. It's important to have all these little words. This portion of the meeting is to receive comments from the public on items not included in this agenda regarding matters germane to town policies or business or subjects within the town council's real or apparent jurisdiction. Individuals or group spokespersons must sign up with the town clerk prior to the start of the meeting. The council is interested in hearing your concerns, but may not take action or deliberate on the subject matter brought up during the petitions and comments segment. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda. Now, I'll ask our town clerk, has anyone signed up to speak during the petitions and comments? Hearing none, we'll move along to our regular calendar here, and we will officially adopt the agenda, and I will ask council members for a motion and a second on this.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Matthews and a second by Mr. Vance. This is pretty routine, so I'll ask for a voice vote. All in favor of adopting the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Presentation, no presentation, no softball awards, no handouts, no certificates, no proclamations. We'll move right along to the consent agenda. And these are items that have been studied by our staff and our councilmen over the preceding weeks. They're lumped together for ease of dispensing, well, if we don't discuss each one. So I will ask any council member, if there's any item on the consent agenda that you want to see pulled out and discussed in more detail.
I'll ask on number five, and it's just to get more information for the council. I spoke with Mr. Hodges today for clarification about the no parking zone on Bella Rose Way.
Okay. Yeah. Who would have believed that parking would ever be a problem in Garner? But there are spots where we have to take action. So there's a motion and a second to remove that item. Let's see if there's any motion to remove any other items. Okay? So there's a, I think we would take a motion to adopt the consent agenda minus item number five that would be put aside for future development.
So moved?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Singleton makes the motion, Mr. Matthews, second. All in favor of adopting the consent agenda minus item number five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. That passes unanimously. We will deal with that issue again later that.
No, listen, I just asked for clarification from Mr. Hodges. We can vote on it. It won't take but a minute. You'll just tell the council what's going to be done there, as you told me to clarify.
Yes, sir. Mr. Singleton asked earlier today for clarification on the map and some of the language that is in your memo. On Bella Rose Lake Way, which is a pretty narrow road, we also have access point to one of our public parks, Centennial Park. We have had the fire marshal, our inspections office, fire inspector, and engineers office, engineer department, take a look at the width of that road, and it meets the criteria for establishing a no parking fire lane on one side of the road. So we will be establishing that if you take action tonight to approve it. One thing to clarify for the map is the red line on your map indicates the end of the publicly dedicated roadway ends about halfway down the road as it approaches Bella Rose Facility. The road dedication to the public ends at the cul-de-sac that was then linked that, and then from the cul-de-sac down to Bella Rose's facility, it is not a public street. But because we're establishing a fire lane and not a regular no parking zone, our staff will work with Bella Rose to change the signs that they have there on the portion of the road that is not publicly dedicated to no parking fire lane, so that our police, our fire marshals, and anyone else can support anyone who is parking there and enforce, rather, the no parking along that way. Mr. Singleton, does that provide the clarity you were looking for?
Yes. I had someone who works there contact me a few months back, and I contacted the staff because if you go there, mainly on the weekend, and there's an event at the shelter, their car is parked on both sides, and it's pretty narrow. And, you know, fire department is first responder, and if they, you know, they go with the vehicle they're in, if they're taking the ladder truck, that's very narrow for that vehicle to get through and their other trucks. So that's why I brought the staff's attention.
And so we do recognize that there's a parking challenge at the, near the shelter at the park. A forthcoming parks improvement project will be to do some work at Centennial Park to replace the playground and replace some, provide some additional accessibility there. And so once that is done, we will be working with the public to try to help them encourage the use of the large parking lots for those who are able to use those and the other spaces for the folks who need additional assistance getting access to the shelter facility.
Okay. Thank you for bringing that up, and thanks for the explanation. It's good to hear this. I'm guessing that this suggestion, like many, came from a citizen somewhere along the line or property owner.
Came from someone who worked there and contacted me and said, will you take a look at this? And then I asked staff to take a look at it.
Excellent. So that's where we count on all of you to bring these things to our attention that we can't deal with. And I'll ask for guidance from our town manager, town attorney. Is this something that we will see on a future consent agenda to take specific action on that?
We can see it right now. I just, I knew that we approved consent agenda, item number five that we just discussed.
There's a movement, a motion from Mr. Singleton to adopt item number five.
Second.
A second from Mr. Matthews. I'll call for a voice vote. All in favor of approving item number five, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by nay. Hearing none, that's unanimous. Thank you. Thanks for bringing that one out. Good discussion. Now, we get to move along to the public hearings, and we have several tonight. And also get to read this disclaimer before these. The first four public hearings on tonight's agenda are legislative hearings, which do not require sworn testimony. However, persons interested in speaking, including the applicant, must sign up with the town clerk. Town staff will present a brief presentation, followed by the applicant, and other persons who wish to comment on the item will be recognized to speak. Council requests that groups of individuals with the same position to designate a representative to speak for the group. And I might also mention that at that point, if we have members of the public who want to speak, they have to sign in with the town clerk. And we do try to limit that to three minutes per person to make sure everyone has a chance. So we'll talk about that again a little later. That being said, our first item tonight is the Garner-Raleigh Annexation Agreement, and our presenter from the Planning Department is our Planning Director, Mr. Jeff Treisenberg.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Good to be with you again tonight. Our first item from planning tonight is the Garner-Raleigh Annexation Agreement, and this is our part of the public hearing for that. Just as background, Raleigh had their public hearing on this on July 2, and it was approved. And I do have a couple of staff members from the City of Raleigh Planning Department, Christopher Goldman, Matthew Burns, here with us tonight if you have any questions of them as well. But just a little bit of background, and then I'll walk you through the very minimal changes to the agreement. Our previous agreement was approved back in 1996. They're good for a period of 20 years. So technically, this agreement that we had expired back in 2016, but we have been applying the 2016 forward till now under staff agreement. It describes the annexation boundary as to where Raleigh can annex and where Garner can annex. It describes the provision of utility services between the two municipalities, which is not as big of an issue anymore since we're all served by Raleigh Water. And then it also makes provisions for the exchange of information, particularly when annexations happen in close proximity to the agreed-upon line. So the proposed agreement that you have before you tonight, again, would be for a period of 20 years, so it would be valid until 2044. Again, it describes that annexation boundary. We have made some small revisions to accommodate some subdivision activity, various re combinations. In a couple cases, there's been some ETJ relinquishment. And it will require notification of annexation activity within 1,000 feet of this line. So anytime that Raleigh will annex within 1,000 feet, they'll send us a letter, and when we do, we will likewise send them a letter just so that they're aware. And of course, it will continue to describe the provision of utilities. So this map shows the line along its whole distance from Lake Wheeler Road, up around the NC State property here, the ag farm, then running across through, up around Tryon Road, then down between Tryon and Mechanical, up around Cloverdale, over onto Creech, cutting up over to I-40, down I-40, along the northern boundary of the quarry, over here to Rock Quarry Road and Old Balcom Road, and then across to the county line. So again, that's largely the same boundary that we've had. There's four minor revisions along the way. The first one is over here off of Inwood Forest. This is where we relinquished some ETJ back in 2018, I believe it was. There was subsequently some subdivision activity that took place here. So with the establishment of these parcels now, we just want to move that line over. You can see where we have existing ETJ still on a couple of parcels right here. So a very small shift. This is probably the most critical piece that would be changing jurisdiction from Garner to Raleigh. This is up along the Tryon Road extension that would go over I-40. There's a piece of property here that is owned, I believe, had some ties to the development that's already happened in Raleigh. It's not accessible by road from anywhere within Garner's jurisdiction. You would actually have to go out onto Tryon and then back in. So there is a little stream draw through here. So this would move the line from where it is today down to this stream. But in return, Garner will also get something from Raleigh. We always like to trade. So here, this is along Rock Quarry. This, again, this parcel, this piece of land right here that's enclosed by the blue and the orange dashed line is actually part of a larger parcel that is already within Garner's jurisdiction, our ETJ. So probably 75% to 80% of the parcel is already within our ETJ. So Raleigh has agreed to move the line to follow that property line so that the owner does not have to develop under two jurisdictions. And then lastly, probably fairly inconsequential, because I believe some of this land is in state ownership, but again, a parcel line has shifted so as not to split the parcel. This little piece right in here would actually come under Garner's jurisdiction instead of Raleigh's. There will be a future step required for that one part that I pointed out that would be going from Garner to Raleigh. Staff will be working with their staff and Wake County to make this happen at a future date. It's not imperative that it happen right now at the same time, but we also don't want to let it linger. But we will have to do a relinquishment of this little triangular area, and so that Raleigh can accept it into their ETJ. So just to be aware that that would be forthcoming. So the next steps would be to receive any public comments on this matter tonight, then close the public hearing. As noted, both staffs are available here if you have any questions, but we do recommend approving ordinance 2024-5283.
Thank you, Jeff. Very informative. I'll now ask council members if they have any questions for Mr. Treisenberg. Okay, seems well thought out. I'll also ask our town clerk if any members of the public have signed up to speak on this item.
Excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Mr. Treisenberg mentioned, there are two representatives from the City of Raleigh, but they indicated that they're available for questions. There were no other members of the public who wished to speak on this item.
Okay, so no members of the public, but we do have a couple of Raleigh folks to answer questions, and I'll ask the council again, any particular questions for our representatives from Raleigh?
Questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. Well, at that time then, I will close the public hearing, and I'll ask council members if there's a motion related to adopting this ordinance.
I move the adoption of ordinance 2024-5283.
Motion by Mr. Vance. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Behringer. There's a motion and a second. I'll go with a voice vote on this. All council members who are in favor of adopting this ordinance, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. Hearing none, that passes as adopted unanimously. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Treisenberg. And don't go far, you might be up again on the next one. This is the voluntary contiguous annexation petition related to Spring Drive Townhouses. And again, if I remember correctly, this had been through several stages of approval, rezoning, et cetera, and this is kind of the final technical step of this process. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Treisenberg.
That is correct. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. This is case ANX-2405 for Spring Drive Townhomes. Just to give you a little general orientation, the star marks kind of where we are in Garner. So we're right there along Timber Drive, just south of Woodland or Grove Mott Road. And zooming in, you can see our contiguous corporate limits that exist today in blue, and you see the site outlined there in red. As we noted, a majority of the site that was part of the Spring Drive Townhomes project is already within the corporate limits right here, but this part is not. So this would be to clean that up and make it all a part of the contiguous corporate limits of Garner in order for them to hook up to water and sewer. So again, the owners are currently Tri-Lanco. It would be contiguous, and it's just about 2.23 acres. Again, our recommendation is to adopt the ordinance, and the applicant is here just in case you have any questions of them as well.
Okay. Now, I'll ask the council members if you have any questions for Mr. Treisenberg on this item. Okay. Are there any questions for the applicant who has a representative here? Okay. Well, in that case then, have we got any other individuals who have signed up to speak on this item?
No one has signed up to speak on this item.
Okay. That being the case, then I will close the public hearing, and I'll ask the council members for a motion related to this ordinance.
Mayor, move we adopt ordinance 2024-5284 to extend the corporate limits of the town of Garner.
Second.
Mr. Singleton makes the motion, and that was seconded by Mr. Vance, I think. Okay, we'll call a voice vote on this one. All in favor of that motion to adopt the ordinance, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. Hearing none, that passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving right along. Thank you, Jeff, for staying right there. We have a voluntary contiguous annexation petition, again, a similar step in the process, but a different project. This is the Cambria Project, and Mr. Treisenberg, if you would fill us in on this one, please.
Yes. So this is case ANX-24004, the Cambria formerly known as the Walters Buffalo Project. Again, just giving you a general location and orientation to where this is in Garner. We're out here by South Garner High School. Zooming in, the boundary of the site, you'll see that we have both contiguous corporate limits to the direct west at South Garner High School and to the north at the Meadowbrook Park property. This again would be a contiguous annexation comprising seven different parcels. It's a little over 128 acres. We would also be taking in eight acres of public right-of-way. Again, we would recommend adoption of the annexation ordinance. This would allow the town to start exercising its in-town regulations, both within the UDO as well as in the town code. And again, I don't believe the applicant is here tonight for this one. Oh, they are. Okay, great. So if you have any questions for them or for us, we'll be glad to answer any of those.
Okay. Well, again, let me ask the council if they have any questions for Mr. Treisenberg first. Mr. Dellinger?
Yep. Two questions, one for Mr. Treisenberg and one probably for the town attorney. The first question is, what would be the impact on density if this were not allowed to be annexed into the town?
I don't know that there would be any technical effect on density. It's just that folks would be paying twice the water and sewer bills.
And that's the other question is, if we're not annexed into the town, what impact would that have with their participation in the development agreement that we're under with the applicant?
So the development agreement is a separate contractual agreement, so the annexation would not have an impact.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Treisenberg? Any questions for the applicant? Would you like to hear from the applicant?
I have a question for the applicant. Are they here? I said they were.
Okay. Thank you. If you would introduce yourself, name and address, please.
Good evening. Beth Blackman, Simmons Group, 5410 Trinity Road, Suite 102, Raleigh. I am here on behalf of the applicant. The applicant is developer is here as well, property owner and developer. We're glad to answer any questions that you have, if you want to ask, and then we'll see if it's myself or Rob, the news dancer.
Thank you. There's been a history of, documented history of burning and dumping on the property. What steps are you going to take moving forward to prevent that?
I'll let Mr. Redloff answer that question.
Good evening. Rob Redloff, address is 1222 Crescent Green Drive in Cary, North Carolina. My name's Rob. I'm with Pulte, I'm sure many of you remember. Kuscher, Dellinger, yeah, we obviously previously had some issues come up with burning and dumping, and I can just tell you that we've ceased burning, and I think, you know, any of the neighbors now could attest to that. You know, after, you know, some complaints we've received, we agreed to stop that completely and are not going to do it going forward. And with regards to the dumping, it's been addressed with the contractor. It's not something we were aware of or, you know, happy about as well. It's been addressed with them, an employee that, for them, that worked for them, that was doing this unbeknownst to the owners, was terminated. His employment was terminated. So it is something we take seriously, and you can rest assured that we're not, you're not going to have any more issues like that.
Site control is very important. I know some developments, you go around, they've got security up, cameras and all those light poles and blue lights and stuff. So access and control of the property is important for safety reasons, but just keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? And I'll ask your town clerk if we have any individuals who have signed up to speak on this item.
No members of the public have signed up to speak.
Okay. If we have no other people signed up, I'll close the public hearing. But before I call for a motion, I'm just going to make one, a couple of comments. One, one of the neighbors out there asked, why is the annexation at a different time than all the rezoning and starting, et cetera? And the short answer is there are pros and cons, but we are reevaluating the town's stance on when does the annexation fall in the process. There are some pros, that if the property is immediately annexed, then the town has jurisdiction over things like burning, like dumping. There's other negatives, but it's something we're looking into. That was a good suggestion. Also, to commend the neighbors out there for paying attention, and as Rob with Pulte said, he was glad to learn that something was going not the way they wanted it, and was able to take action against a subcontractor, a sub-subcontractor, whatever it was, who has taken advantage of the opportunity to dispose of debris from another site and doing it improperly. So again, thanks to the citizens who spoke up, helped bring this attention to the, bring it to the attention of everyone who wanted to do better. So the public hearing is closed. I'll ask council members, is there a motion related to this ordinance, the annexation?
I move the adoption of ordinance 2024-5285.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Vance and a second by Mr. Matthews to adopt the annexation petition. So that being on the floor, is there any other further discussion from council members on this motion? Well, this one, I think I'll call for a roll call vote for clarity, specificity. And that being said, I'll start at this then with Mr. Matthews. If you're in favor of the annexation petition, if you would signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Singleton?
Aye.
Ms. Behringer?
Aye.
Mr. Dellinger?
Aye.
Mr. Vance?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. It passes unanimously. And that concludes the annexation petition over there. Thank you very much. Now, slightly different one, not an annexation, but deserving of a lot of thought as well. And that's the conditional rezoning of the Homestead at Brian Farm. Our presenter on this one is Erin Joseph, our Assistant Planning Director, and we'll ask you to bring us up to speed on this one if you would.
Thank you. I like to have my notes up here with me. So pardon me. Good evening, Mayor. It's good to see you all, council members and members of the public. I will be presenting the rezoning case CZMP 2304, also known as Homestead at Brian Farm. So the applicant, Lennar Corporation, has submitted a Tier 2 conditional rezoning request on behalf of the property owners, Ben and Joyce Hagwood, and on behalf of the property owners Ben and Joyce Hagwood and RA Bryan Farms LLC. The request seeks to rezone 99.17 acres from rural agriculture to residential eight conditional for the development of a collective maximum of 265 dwelling units, which is down from 291 from their last submitted. The site is located just west of Hebron Church Road and just north of Clifford Road. So you have Clifford Road here and Hebron Church Road here, just on that western boundary. So the current zoning of the site is rural agriculture. And it's intended for uses such as rural residential agriculture and silver culture. Typically, the zoning district is found outside of our corporate limits, the town's corporate limits, where water, public water and sewer are readily available. The current uses on the site include single-family residential detached and vacant. The surrounding zoning districts include a mix of R2, R4 conditional and CMX. This area in particular is undergoing increased development with several residential projects under construction or in review with town staff. And the site will be connected with water and sewer through the adjacent Ridge Moore Development. The site is not located within an activity center, but the nearest activity center is towards the northeast, the Neighborhood Activity Center. And this area of the community consists of a mixture of vacant tracts, agricultural uses and single-family neighborhoods. Since 2015, this area has been transitioning from low-density rural agriculture to suburban, suburban developments and densities. And several projects have been approved in this area over the last several years. You have Oak Manor as well as Matnolia Park. And the high school was approved within the last five to six years. So Hebron Church Road and Clifford Road are classified as secondary routes and they are maintained by NC DOT. The most recent NC DOT traffic count was September 2023 for Hebron Church Road just south of Ackerman, just about in this area, with a total count of 6,681 average daily trips. And then you have Clifford Road near New Bethel, which is just down here off the screen a bit there, but that's about where Clifford and New Bethel connects. And there, that average daily trips is 3,241. So this rezoning, this proposal requests to rezone to R8 conditional. The applicant has narrowed the potential uses to two out of 18. They have, are capping the collective number of dwelling units at 265. Again, this is a reduction in the dwelling counts. Further, a further breakdown of that 265 overall total, the applicant is committing to an individual maximum of 107 townhouse units and an individual maximum of 167 single-family detached. The applicant has also fine-tuned and revised their proffered conditions. Again, the number of dwelling units, the total collective will not exceed 265. There has also been an added commitment to share in the costs of the White Oak Bryan Road improvements as identified in the Walters Buffalo Development Agreement. And they have committed to architectural standards that include garage windows and decorative hardware, a minimum square footage of patios, 80 square foot, uh, feet, decks and porches, a minimum size of the front porch, as well as size of the deck, non-decorative columns or pilasters. Further, the applicant has added conditions to window treatments, features of materials, as well as the main amenity area will commence construction prior to the issuance of the first certificate, certificate of occupancy. They have committed to several pocket parks. And within those pocket parks, they will contain a minimum of the following elements: benches, pet, pet waste stations, shade structure, playground, dog park or paved walking trails, except for pocket part B. The applicant has also added a playground and added additional architectural standards for the townhouses with pitch roof, child feature break. And so really addressing that articulation of those townhomes, a minimum of three breaks for buildings of five units or more. And they also have committed to two play lawns that will be loosely bounded by landscaping or hardscaping to identify and demarcate that area as a play lawn. And they have added the, a commitment of at least one playground. So being a Tier Two Rezoning, it does include the master plan. This master plan is to help illustrate and to conceptually visualize the site design. The purple denotes the single-family detached homes. And the pink and the golden color illustrate the townhomes. You have a public greenway that bisets the site. And they've illustrated that they, they have their stormwater control ponds. The darker green area is their tree preservation area, expanded sidewalk, as well as private trails that connect into the private greenway. All right, the master plan also features the total number of single-family detached and townhomes. It is 150, it's showing 158 single-family detached and illustrating 98 townhomes. But again, keep that number in mind, that maximum 265 and that breakdown of 100 individual, 107 individual maximum for townhomes and 167 individual max for single-family detached. The site is required to provide 9.92 acres of open space. 25% of that must be active and a combination of conservation and recreation space. The conservation portion includes repairing buffer areas and wetlands. And they have the recreation as qualifying open areas, amenities, pedestrian trail, trails with connections to the new segment of the public greenway. Illustrated here. The site is not within a watershed protection area. However, it is subject to water quality, nitrogen and quantity requirements. And there are three surface stormwater control measures. There will be a connection to water from the Ridge, Ridge Moore subdivision. And the sewer lines will be extended to adjacent and upstream properties per the Raleigh Water Policy. The blue shows the water lines and the green shows the eight-inch sewer line. So a traffic impact analysis was required and completed in June of 2023 based off of the assumption and the initial application of a maximum of 310 dwelling units. It was expected upon those numbers to generate 2,555 trips. However, these numbers will be slightly higher than the current proposed maximum. But staff estimates that the new maximum number of expected daily trips to be approximately 2,411. So you have these numbers here as the AM peak, 44 trips in, 134 trips out. One PM, 134 trips in, 87 trips out. So these numbers are going to be slightly higher because of the initial assumptions that were based off of the TIA that was completed in June of 2023. No off-site improvements are recommended as needed to reflect the limited proportional impact and the added traffic generated by this proposal. The figure here to the left, it's difficult to see that, but it shows a future build-out at 2027 and the requirement for a new 50-foot dedicated northbound lane, turn lane on Hebron Church Road. There, and then a new 50-foot dedicated westbound right turn lane from Clifford Road. And the applicant will update their TIA to reflect those, the new numbers of the dwelling units before it goes to the planning commission. All right, and considering the environmental and cultural resources, there is an existing stream with associated buffers along the northern boundary of the prop, of the project. A public greenway is proposed along the utility transmission easement, roughly about here, that bisets the site. And also a public greenway site path link between the transmission easement corridor and the Hebron Church Road corridor via Clifford Road. The historic farmhouse on the corner of Clifford Road and Hebron Church Road is proposed to remain. And the existing pond is proposed to be drained. So the request was contacted 126 properties and occupants for their neighborhood meeting. The first meeting was held in June of 2023 and the second was held this year in January. Nine attendees attended the first meeting and the second meeting had a total of 11. And you do have the full meeting information in the staff report. As we move along to the consistency with our comprehensive land use plan, this site is not, again, within an activity center. The character typology is neighborhoods and this is a level two area to strengthen. So as we analyze this proposal against our comprehensive plan, 17 growth framework criteria were evaluated. 13 were strongly consistent, one modestly consistent had one split. There were none that were modestly inconsistent. And then there are two scored strongly inconsistent. And those two strong inconsistencies were related to the front-loaded townhouses and the form of the small lot, single-family detached homes. As we looked at the land use and community character consistency, 26 criteria were determined to be applicable or possible to be meaningful to address. Right now, it stands at modestly consistent. The applicant has worked with us and made minor changes. And that's helped them to obtain that modest consistency rating. And they did that by enhancing street frontages, addressing street frontages, the use of open space for creating a stronger central focal point to the neighborhood and proffering those additional conditions or even clarifying existing ones that speaks more directly to the specific recommendations of the comprehensive plan. Again, there's always room for improvement. And so we believe that with some continued fine-tuning in response to this evaluation tool, as well as the additional public input, staff will likely be able to support a stronger overall finding of consistency. And you also have that full consistency analysis and review. So the next steps, we will offer to finish conducting and close the public hearing the, and refer it to the planning commission for findings of consistency and to provide a recommendation of approval or denial. And on then the final step, to come back to town council and determine findings of reasonableness and a decision to approve or deny the rezoning request. Thank you. I am available to answer questions. The applicant is here this evening as well. They have provided a presentation. And so I will step aside unless there's questions for, for me right at this moment. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for the great information. Stand by. There might be a question that council members wanted to ask you before we hear from the applicant.
Thank you.
That was a lot of great information. A lot of work has gone into this clearly in your analysis already. And for, do we have any questions for, for our Ms. Joseph right now?
Yes, just one minor question in reference to the number of units. 265 dwelling units, that's what we have now, with 107 townhomes and 167 single-family detached homes.
Right, it doesn't add up to 265. And that's because that they, the maximum, they cannot go over that. They cannot exceed 265. So that allows a little bit of buffer room. So you say, okay, you'll have 107 townhomes. That means you're going to have to reduce a little bit the number of single-family detached and vice versa so that it does not exceed that 265 minimum. So there's a, so we, they've added a nine unit count buffer in, in that number, but they won't, they cannot go above those maximums that have been set. So at no time, they would not be able to have 107 townhomes and 167 single-family. There'll, there's a little bit of wiggle room in there for them, but at no time can they exceed 265. So that'll be more or less discussed in finer detail if this proposal is, moves forward at site plan and subdivision.
Thank you. Mr. Dellinger?
Just one question on the, the traffic. I see numbers for everything but sort of White Oak and, and New Bethel, I see New Bethel. But what sort of projections have we done for everything that's been approved and currently under construction? Basically, the full current build-out of everything down there before we add anything else? So what is the maximum traffic that's going to be generated just by what is already in the works?
I'm not sure of that answer. I need to defer to maybe Jeff or to the applicant if there has been any further details and taken into account the totality of all of the, of the development.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Just to add to that, we have started polling uh the numbers now that we found the September twenty-three DOT um and trying to trying to present some data that would make sense um to folks. So we would hope that we may have that uh in time for planning commission.
And and would you also, from that data, be able to discern the uh what's, I'm gonna ask Mr. Vance what the right word is for signalization. What's the word I'm looking for?
I don't know.
You know, the uh signal, you know, the condition or whatever, and they get rated on the scales, right?
If it'd be wonderful, if it'd be wonderful, a signal.
So would we, when we have all those numbers and add them in and say, we're building all this out, what is the state of of this light, uh, New Bethel and fifty? And then Ryan Road when it comes and White Oak, and now the new fun and exciting Ellendale, White Oak, and Timber and White Oak. So will we be able to to project what that the condition of those intersections will be?
I don't know that we'll have the capability to get that specific without having a traffic engineer brought on board to help us with that. We do know that the capacity numbers, um, that eighteen thousand three hundred that we talk about, we do know that that is roughly a somewhere between a level D and E, but it's something that's considered acceptable, but it's pushing that. Um, so some of the analysis that we're doing, we're kind of backing off of that a little bit to leave us a little bit of buffer rooms, like ninety percent of what that capacity is. So what we'll be able to do is hopefully give you a little bit of an idea of what the capacity situation looks like leading out to fifty and leading out to White Oak. Um, and so that's, that will probably be as far as we can go with it without bringing somebody else on board.
Okay.
But that should be, hopefully, some help.
Right, thank you.
Hey, Ms. Behringer, questions? Okay, well, thank you very much, Ms. Joseph, and I think uh the applicant is going to provide a presentation this evening as well. If you would please introduce yourself, sir.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council, I am Collier Marsh with Parker Poe at three oh one Fayetteville Street here on behalf of the applicant. I've got representatives of Lennar and Adams that can answer any questions today. Uh, so this is the home senate, Brian Farm, uh, actually the second time that we've been in front of council. You may recall the way back on May seventh, we presented this. Um, and at that point, shortly before that meeting, we had gotten staff's review under the new comprehensive plan. And so we had gone through several rounds of review under the old plan, got the new one, had new comments, and we recognized that we needed to reevaluate certain parts of the project. So we came to council on May seventh, gathered feedback from council, and then worked with staff to make a number of changes since then, which we'll summarize in this presentation. Did want to clarify just at the start uh in regards to traffic. Um, there are actually two improvements that are recommended with our TIA, and those are signals at um both ends of Clifford Road. So at New Bethel Church Road and at um Hebron Church Road, there's potential for signals when warranted. So that was one of the recommendations of our TIA, I just wanted to clarify that, uh, as well as frontage improvements and contributions to the um those White Oak corridor improvements. So so traffic hasn't been overlooked in this project, and we also do have Nate Boken with McAdams who can give a little uh more math and science to those uh those points. We've covered the site and the surrounding area and the um future land use map and comprehensive plan consistency. Uh, we continue to work with staff to get as consistent as possible, and and we're learning this new comprehensive plan on those tools, and we're trying to make it as strongly consistent as we're able to, and and we'll continue those efforts. So this is the master plan that was presented to council back in May. Um, and so again, we recognized we were going to have to make some changes. We wanted to hear from council as to what uh what the overall impressions were of this project. So we knew, you know, if we had to make changes, we could make them all at once. Uh, what we heard uh were a lot of common themes about ensuring that these are, you know, the right housing products for the area, that they're compatible. But we heard concerns that generally align with density in the area, concerns about impacts to the surrounding community, and frankly, just a little too many townhomes within the project. The thought behind the layout here between single-family detached and townhomes was, if you look to the projects to the north, we've got a easement that separates it into two sides. Now, the left-hand side of the easement, there's single-family to the north. On the right-hand side of the easement, there are townhomes to the north. So when we looked at this site, we said we would continue those development patterns. In our eyes, that's creating consistent development with what's neighboring it. Uh, and so we had a a combination of single-family and townhomes that you see here. Um, but understood that there were concerns still with that overall layout. Uh, I recall council member Vance commenting about just the overall ratio, that we had about seventy percent townhomes, as you see here, uh, and can we get closer to forty percent townhomes? And so what we present to you tonight is uh just a touch better than that. So we have switched a large percentage of the the townhomes from the previous iteration from townhomes to single-family detached, uh, and actually got below that forty percent number, so now we're at about thirty-eight percent townhomes. Uh, in doing so, we essentially swapped townhomes for single-family detached. Our density inherently goes down. I'll I'll talk about some of those numbers, they're a little confusing, and and we're willing to make them as clear as we're able to, and we can work on that. Um, but ultimately, we swapped single-family in in place of townhomes, which has the effect of reducing density, creating, I think, the mix that council was seeing here. Uh, one of the things that may be less apparent is we also added a new product type. We heard, you know, comments about wanting to have a step above, having that next product product type having more. So we previously had twenty-two-foot-wide townhomes, twenty-six-foot-wide townhomes. We replaced all the twenty-six-foot-wide townhomes with the largest townhome that Lennar offers, which is a twenty-eight-foot town wide townhome. So that's essentially your large floor plan, larger square footage, uh, top of the line for what they offer in this area. So um that, those would be the pink that you see there, that's a new product type that was brought into this. We've also ensured that we have the top product type for single-family detached that fits within uh the lots we're proposing. So we we listened to what council had to say on the unit mix and the product types and made some really meaningful changes, substantial reduction in density. Um, there are also a number of changes that were made uh just with pedestrian walkability, greenway connections. Um, and so we heard comments from council about how the greenway network not only functions internally, but how is it connecting to the surrounding area, noting that we've got a school to the southeast or to the south. We've got a future park to the east, we've got potential for commercial adjoining our site on the west. How are we getting to all of these different neighborhoods? And so we sat down with Jeff, I think two meetings, specific to the greenway uh connectivity, and really worked through the plans, figured out what was feasible and what wasn't. Um, and so we've got connections that allow us to connect greenways to the north, allow us to bring the greenway system through our site and connect to the existing greenway network to the south. We're also bringing um greenway along Clifford Road to the Hebron Church Road intersection so that it can then match up with the town's planned greenway to take you right into the park. Uh, so you'll have a greenway connection from this neighborhood taking you into the future park. And we also included a private greenway a little further up to the on the page uh so that if a future break in traffic is allowed for pedestrian crossing, we've got a good location to cross right into the park directly from the neighborhood. Um, so we listened to everything that uh e- every concern on the pedestrian network and made all the changes we were able to. Uh, there are a few areas where we're pinched, uh, and we couldn't make every possible change. And the reason is not because we don't want to, but because there are environmental constraints with the site that prohibit us from crossing certain areas. But otherwise, we're feasible, we made every change. This slide just summarizes the overall changes in text form. So I know those numbers were confusing. So in the previous iteration, we had zoning conditions that had a max number of units, and so we took that max from three hundred and ten, we moved it down to two hundred and sixty-five. That's just the written zoning condition, our cap. So that our max is reduced by forty-five. Um, but our plans show two hundred and fifty-six. Realistically, we're not sure how we would ever get any more units. We've looked at the site pretty carefully, but the thought was, at the subdivision site plan stage, sometimes you learn things, things don't align exactly as you thought, and there may be opportunities to capture units, which is always desirable from the developer's standpoint. Um, so we had built a nine-unit flexibility. So when you look at those individual, single-family breakdown, townhome breakdowns, each of those separate breakdowns have the ability to absorb those nine units. Now, again, if that's a concern of council, we don't really need that, we just always try to build in that flexibility. So if if what we hear is, you know, we don't want two sixty-five, we want two fifty-six, that's no problem because we're confident in those numbers. So I just wanted to explain, we were talking with staff this week about that that topic, that uh, we we didn't really pay too much attention to the discrepancy until it was raised by staff and we saw the confusion and agreed. Um, but again, we talked about the ratio being flipped here. Uh, this was a townhome dominant community, and now it's a single-family detached uh dominant community, uh, and really changes the overall nature of the project. Um, another thing we we've heard quite a bit about is what is, you know, the desired um architecture and layout of single-family detached and townhomes and gardens? What have we learned from past projects? Uh, so what we did with our architectural conditions is learning from recent projects like the Parket Garner Station, the exercises we've been through. Uh, we went through the list of all those architectural conditions that were added, the list of all the conditions that town staff has seen as being important. We went through and added them all in. So that is my best way of summarizing all those architecture changes, is that they're all in there, and I'm confident if you talk to staff, have they done what we need to do on architecture? The answer is yes. Now, one of the things that also came up in our discussions is, well, yeah, we are elevating architecture, we're trying to get to that step above here, but are we creating too much monotony, right? Are we just saying everything has to have all these features, then everything looks the same? So there's also conditions in there to require variation among materials and product types so that you don't have that cookie cutter, everything looks exactly the same. You have high-quality architecture that actually is distinct from a neighbor's house. Um, and we made all of the greenway and sidewalk network changes, and then we also enhance our open space in our amenity areas. Now, these next slides just show the changes to the to the conditions. Uh, again, these are summarized or paraphrased versions of the changes, um, but but they're extensive. We previously didn't codify the contribution to the White Oak improvements. That was mainly because we were hoping to get to a point in time where those numbers were certain with the Pulte project. Uh, as we all know, that's been a little slower to evolve, so we didn't have that answer. We wanted to say we're going to give X dollars and be fine. Um, we're still hoping to do that, but at the very least, we put the the framework that town staff wants to see for those contributions. Uh, we've added a commitment for a playground, and where we have those open playfields, we have commitments to have landscaping to create a border so that it's actually a distinct area, it's identifiable, but still usable. Uh, and these next few slides just go through the extensive architectural conditions. Happy to answer any questions on them, but but I think that the best way to address that is, if if you don't believe us, ask staff if we've done what we should, and I think that that they will say yes. I want to touch on open space because this project went before the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, and we heard uh comments from the committee and from council members that, you know, is there adequate open space here? And so, um, you know, when you look at from the bird's eye view, uh, it's tough to appreciate how much there really is. This is a ninety-nine acre site. Now, in our master plan, we talk about minimums of open space and minimums of tree preservation, but you don't have to squint too hard to see that a substantial amount of this project is preserved, is open space. And those grayed-out areas include yards and things that we're not taking credit for. So this isn't a ram and cram as many units as you can, there is meaningful open space, much of which is passive um as shown on this slide, and there is that large easement in the middle. Um, but we have also endeavored to be meaningful with our active open space. And so council member Singleton, I recall you making a comment that we don't want our kids playing that power line. And we agree, we've got the the power line easement, we've got good, actual, usable, active open space. And so I want to zoom in on a couple of points and just show it to you. Uh, this is on the left-hand side, the side west of the easement, those pocket parks that are included. The one on the north is about point seven acres. Um, and within that, we're showing a U-ten soccer field, so that will fit within the bounds of that. So um I I did a little calculations, I know we've heard comments about having ten thousand square foot playfields. Um, that point nine acre, sorry, point seven acre area is about thirty thousand square feet. Uh, and within it, you can fit a truly usable soccer field. We've got a point-two acre uh pocket park further to the south, um, and that's just a hair under ten thousand square feet. Now, we don't want our kids playing in the power line easement, but we are willing to maybe have some dogs run around there. I hope that's all right, we're thinking about putting a dog park along the trails there.
Multi-purpose fields. Multi-purpose fields.
Multi-purpose.
Good soccer there, multi-purpose.
Um, moving moving to the east side, just want to show that the open spaces aren't meaningful. Again, it sometimes is lost on a large site such as this, that you do have large parks. So that that pocket part E, Park E, point eight acres, about thirty-five thousand square feet, and that's a soccer field within it. Um, and that's staff suggestion, we've included. You'll have plantings and things that doesn't just look like a field, and you think, is that someone's backyard or not? But it's landscape, it's defined area that you know you can use as an amenity for the community, and it wraps in with the greenway trail. Uh, some other pocket parks up to point nine acres, and then that main entity that's as centrally located as we can within the site and is bisected by an easement. Um, but then we work with staff again to have our walking trails connect everything, so they're, they take advantage of all that passive open space. Um, this is the main amenity, this is a rendering that was done for this project, just to show there, there's a planned clubhouse, a cabana, um, a good-sized pool, as well as a playground, all within one central area, and with walking trails to get everybody there. Um, we're working on getting some better images of the housing in this. Uh, so these are the older images from the prior iteration. Um, we've listened to you, we want to get a step above, and we have some other product types that we can show. Uh, and then the last point of conversation is just the old house that's on the site. Um, and so that house will be incorporated into the neighborhood. It will be part of the HOA, which means it will be subject to the restrictive covenants. Uh, so it will be maintained as a single-family home and will be required to be upkept as all the other neighbor, all the other houses are with, you know, siding being kept up, lawn being moved. And so that ensures that it will be uh preserved into the future. So with that, um, we hope we've addressed your comments, but we're always open to to more things to consider and happy to answer your questions.
Excellent, thanks for the presentation, thanks for the adjustments you you've already made based on interaction with staff and some from council. And I'll ask our council members, I'll start on Mr. Matthews, if any questions.
Uh, no questions, I I know we've had some good meetings and uh uh, speaking for me, I can appreciate the uh dialogue we've had back and forth and your willingness and your company's willingness to listen and and do what we to do to make this project even better than initially it come to us. And I think you've uh achieved those goals, so uh that's all I have, some good comments.
Thank you, Mr. Singleton.
So the uh house we're looking at will be uh under the uh purview of the HOA, so will still be used as a single-family residence. If someone will, I'm assuming rent it or lease it, like, then they can't own it because the HOA owns the property, or can they?
Yeah, so the plan would be that it would be sold like any other house in the neighborhood, and they'd be a member of the HOA. They'd have to own their lawns and follow all the same rules.
They just have a much bigger lawn than everyone else.
Yeah.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that you said that, I didn't, I didn't quite understand it, thank you for clarifying.
They might get two votes on the HOA, who knows?
Pardon?
I said, we might give them two votes on the HOA.
Well, maybe so. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Behringer?
Um, I have no questions, but I I do appreciate your diligence and hard work in listening to what we ask and then doing your best to implement it.
Okay, Mr. Dellinger?
No questions.
Mr. Vance?
Yes, appreciate the adjustments, and uh they are significant in in my mind. Uh, and if if it's not too much, well, I'll wait, I'll wait on that. But uh, yes, again, it was a lot of hard work, a lot of the dialogue back and forth and considerations, uh, and uh it is appreciated.
Okay, excellent, well, uh, I have no particular questions, but I just would uh say the the question before the council tonight is whether or not to refer this to the planning commission for further review and other public hearing. It it seems like it's probably going in that direction, and I would just ask that when when and if we do refer it on to the planning commission, we make a note to continue the conversation uh about the overall traffic situation, as Mr. Dellinger mentioned, uh cumulative from all of the developments out there. I know that's not your sole responsibility, but hopefully our planning staff can help put together some idea of what it's going to take to handle this a year from now, five years from now, maybe even ten years from now, just get some idea of where we're going with that, see what other steps we can take now. And also to continue uh what you've already started emphasizing the quality on the product over there, the the larger townhouses, as you say, uh, keep refining the uh zoning conditions on the the details of the homes, and for the planning commission to pay particular attention to size and quality of all of those things, which has to do with the the ultimate uh tax-assessed value of those, which has to do, how much tax do they pay us? And how much do they pay more than it cost us to provide the services? We've got more and more tuned in uh to this breaking point, and uh the community's been not only self-sufficient, but maybe even uh revenue positive enough to help other areas in the town. So I'm sure the planning commission will be paying attention to that as well. Uh, any other questions or comments from our, for our applicant here as we get? Okay, well, thank you very much, and with that, I'll ask our town uh attorney.
I have a question for for Mr. Trezenberg.
Oh, okay, sure.
His own question.
Sure.
I knew you didn't do the presentation, but you've been around longer to know what all the zoning is around. Um, my research indicated this R eight would be the highest density in that entire area beyond Cambria. Others are R two and R four, is that correct?
Right, right.
So this would be a magnitude higher in, again, for sort of the record and for planning commission benefit as well. Our no question. Um, our UDO, our governor forward says, or no, the UDO says for R eight residential and urban character potential, house scale, neighborhoods are very walkable, often border or within a short distance of commercial or mixed-use districts where shopping, retail, and services exist. R eight districts may also provide districts where shopping, retail, and services exist, R8 districts may also provide a transition from more commercially active districts to lower density, lower single-family districts. So we're putting a high-density project in the middle of lower-density residential, which seems kind of inconsistent. The other, in our Garner Forward Plan, it is listed as neighborhoods, but there's a broad range of items in neighborhoods, single-family, detached, townhomes, duplexes, quadplexes, condominiums, apartments. And it also says, and sometimes mixed, in the same mix are, of neighborhoods of formal supporting neighborhood and formal supporting commercial notes within that. So before Planning Commission is a high-density, non-commercially-integrated project, that on the face of those two items alone is inconsistent with a commercial desert, I will call it, in that part of the town. I just want, your assessment is my read of those two sections of, those sections of our Garner Forward Plan accurate?
So when you read, when you read them at that face value, I would generally agree with you. And I think when we, when Aaron and I and others sat down and talked about the consistency part of it, that's where you do kind of see those stronger inconsistencies do pop up, because it isn't, by the, by the current comprehensive plan, it's not quite the form that we would normally expect. So that's where the, those kind of rose to that, to that level of inconsistency. You know, they have conditioned it to a lower density than what the R8 would allow. You know, the R8, we, we could approach it a couple, they could approach it a couple different ways. We could do the R8 because the R8 allows both the townhomes and the single-family together in one unit. Or we could, you know, approach it from a, a divided zoning, and zone part of it R4 and part of it, you know, MFA or something like that. So, you know, you, we kind of take that into some consideration as well, that, you know, it is, it is R8, yes. Is that probably, is, you know, is that the preferred route? May not be the preferred, but we kind of have to balance what's, what's easier, what's better, and just kind of make those value judgments as well.
And the other outlier is it being a level, a level-two area to strengthen, which indicates and highlights specifically strategic investments and being one to three stories. I don't find townhomes and single-family homes to be alone a strategic investment, which also seems to be inconsistent. The, the backpedal away from the desire for commercial in the heart of maybe 5,000 or 6,000 residential units is, is, gives me pause.
Sure. I don't think, I don't think we've lost, we've tried not to lose sight of the fact that there is some adjacent property that is zoned to help zone for that. You know, we don't have a proposal in front of us right now, in maybe, you know, I think it's somewhat, there's a question out there is, you know, is the market ready yet for commercial out there? I think we've got a couple of places, at least in reserve, that could accommodate that, being right at the corner of Bryan and Clifford, and then up closer to the Roundabout. So we try to keep that in mind as well, too.
And just the last comment, our, our history shows that there's not the willingness to set aside those commercial parcels unless we advocate for that. We've seen that a long before, oh, one. We've seen that on North Garner Station. It was like 5,000 square feet, we end up with 20 or 30. So I think, again, these commercial opportunities, when they're there, and called for by the UDO and the Garner Forward Plan, we need to seize them. And if it's not ready now, maybe it'll be ready in five or six or 10 years, but it's not going to be there if we just make it all commercial.
Yeah. And maybe one of the things that we can do as staff is kind of bring that to the forefront in our presentations as to where we kind of see that happening and kind of maybe show that in more of a broader context of this is before you today, but now here's what's going on potentially around the periphery, and where staff sees that some of those reservations are probably maybe more critical, or we don't want to lose sight of, and document.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Hey, Mr. Vance, any questions?
No questions.
Actually, just, just to follow up on Mr. Dellinger's comment about the commercial, I believe there was a slide that you had that kind of showed where that is. Could you refresh our memory and show on, on the map there that the property is already zoned commercial, that it's actually contiguous to, to this plot, just so we can kind of be thinking about that going forward?
And the ring comes down.
It may be that one right there.
But yes, you do have, you do have, I'm not sure how big this is. My guess is probably about.
Could you go into slide?
Oh, sorry, yep.
Thank you.
Oh, that put me back at the front. So I'm going to just guess this is probably around 10 to 15 acres here along Bryan Road, just south of the elementary school. And then, of course, we do have the activity centers identified up here closer to the Roundabout. You see some existing NMC zoning, not as much as I think what the activity centers would call for. So we would be expecting more commercial rezonings in the future in this area as well.
I guess to your point, the fact that there's existing commercial there means that there's the opportunity for it, and it could be part of this project. And there are propane tanks and other things on part of those. The likelihood of that getting developed without significant investment is very slim. Again, we want the best. We need to advocate for the best. And when we have an opportunity in front of us, a developer, an applicant in front of us, we can't control what's happening to that property. They may come back and want to rezone it for townhomes. I don't know. But it does show that that area is ready for commercial, or somebody thought it was a good idea to have commercial down there.
Yeah.
And it's also part of a larger parcel across the street, so all these other issues with it. But.
Yeah.
That's all. I've got a question, a lot of questions.
Sure.
Okay, good observations, good questions. Thank you.
But to clarify, the reason it is zoned that way is because the use of the propane tanks that have been there for decades is a commercial use. It can't be a residential use. So when we changed the land use plan, you had to zone it something.
Right.
That's the reason it has been. It's been rural, and so that's why it's commercial there. I differ with Mr. Dellinger on you're not going to see commercial down here on these two lane roads. I'm sorry. I, I go in and out of stores and shopping centers every day. And to start on Highway 50 in Timber, start there. Once you leave Timber Crosses, you ride, you go by the water plant, go by the New V A Hospital, go all the way down to 1010, and they got a convenience store. You go past it, there's a little strip and a Dollar General. You go again, you go again, you go again, a store here and a store there, then you get to 42 and 50. What are 42 and 50? A US highway and a state highway crossing. That's why they build them there. You build them where the most traffic will be. Everyone down here is three to five minutes from 30,000 average daily trips at Timber and White Oak and all that development. So the commercial development in some places, it's fine. If you're down east in the rural counties and you're on two-lane roads, and that's the only thing around for 10 miles, that, that's different. But because of the urban setting of what's, where this is transitioning from rural to urban, you're just not going to see these little strip shopping centers, because what you're going to get is, you have to remember, this is very expensive land and new construction, and the lease is going to be expensive, and mom and pops can't go in expensive leases. And so you have to be careful about, you know, certain places that may need it. They just, you just don't build commercial. I mean, Bryan Road is a two-lane road, finally paved, and it used to be dirt not that many years ago, till they built the school. We made them do it. And it's, it's just a two-lane road. That's just the way it is. You're just not going to build a commercial out in some of these areas. And then go down White Oak, and how far do you go to get to get commercial? You get to your crossover on a driveway. And so, you know, they just, they just don't pop up in these places, and it's for a reason. Because we're so urban or transitioning to urban, you can get to retail in three to five minutes. And so again, they, you want to just go down Highway 50. Go down On Stage Road. I mean, it's just not, there just is not commercial built here, there, and everywhere, and it's not going to be. Now, On Stage Road's can change because of 540, and parts of 50 is too. But you, you just, I mean, there are reports in the news every week, not only from Wake County and the state, but the nation, how many vacancies you will have, how many businesses are closed. I mean, there's a major news story about restaurants in Raleigh that have closed, and businesses in downtown Raleigh. And why are they closing downtown Raleigh? Despite all the residents? Because the leases have gone up. They can't pay, can't afford to be there. And it's been in Triangle Business Journal. So they, they have to be selective about where they can put the commercial. It sounds good, but there's, you have to make a special trip to go there if you went to stay on Bryan Road. So they, they want the most traffic, the most opportunities for people that are traveling. We turned down a sheet at the corner of New Bethlehem 50 years ago, but you don't see another one on 50 anywhere till you get down to 42 and 50. So it's where the traffic is, and that's, that's the big thing. And again, look, well, look at 1010 and all the traffic that carries. You go all the way to Williams Crossroads, then you go to 401, there you go, on the highway. So it's where the major traffic is, and how they can get the most trips, and where people are going to go on the major corridors for business. Pop-up businesses are going, in today's world and economy with the lease rates around here, are just, that's a struggle for many, for many type businesses. And you're not going to see a convenience store come down here because it's, you want to go on the major corridors. And I'm not saying that's just any business you're looking at, because that's not correct. You're not going to.
Well, I guess my, my counter, I would just say that if you live down there, you're not three to five minutes from any commercial at all, because the traffic's so bad. When you have that many rooftops surrounding that area, there's a commercial opportunity there. That's all they want is rooftops. You go down Aversboro right here, right across from, you got Aversboro Coffee. You've got a commercial center right there in the middle of a way less densely populated area than South Garner, way less, and across from a school. So.
True. But when, when, when Aversboro Center got built, that was, there was nothing there. I mean, I remember because there were trailer pad, pads built behind it. There's me a trailer park behind it, where my office is now, in Garner Family position. So that was, it was a wasteland, because a smart person, I give them credit, said, "Goners, you can go down Aversboro Road," and they were correct. But it just, the commercial opportunities, the, the convenience store, Webster's, in the early 70s, because that's when pool drive was a dirt road, and you used to ride my bike up there. So, yeah, there, there are opportunities, but Aversboro's a quarter, and Garner's a five, excuse me, it's a four-lane road. A lot of traffic, a lot of residential traffic. It's a lot of residential traffic that can walk there now and ride a bike.
That's sort of my point with regards to this area, to have a walkable commercial. That's what we talk about in our Garner Forward Plans, walkable, walkable commercial. We don't have any vacancies in downtown Garner. You can talk about Raleigh. We don't have any in downtown on Main Street.
But they used to be.
But they're not now, because it's growing.
Yeah, we're not arguing, we're agreeing somewhat.
Well, excuse me. These, these are excellent observations and fabulous goals, and it just points out the difficulty in meeting every goal with any one object. And, and, and there's an opportunity to do this. What will the market sustain? What will the market demand? It's a work in progress, and that's our constant challenge. Jeff, do you deal with this every single day in one way or another? The answer is yes. It's, it's our, it's our challenge to find the balance between all the goals that we have. This is an interesting project. It has pluses and minuses. It doesn't solve every situation, but it's before us now. We've done a pretty good job of analyzing it so far. Remember, the question before us that will come up in a little bit is, do we refer this on to the Planning Commission for further study, further public input? In the meantime, we do need to see if we have any individuals who have signed up to speak on this project.
No individuals have signed up for public comment on this item.
Okay, we don't have any public comment. So based on the input that we've had so far, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to ask council members, is there a motion to, to refer this, this project to the Planning Commission for further review?
So move?
Sir.
Mr. Vance moves, and Ms. Behringer seconds the motion to refer this to the Planning Commission for more public hearing, more input, and, and more review. And since we've had so much fascinating discussion, let's do a roll-call vote on, on this as well. And let's start with Mr. Vance down here. Are you in favor of referring this case to the Planning Commission? Aye.
Aye.
And Mr. Dellinger?
No.
Ms. Behringer?
Aye.
Mr. Singleton?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Okay, that sounds like four ayes and one nay, so the motion passes to refer this to the Planning Commission for further study. And thank you for continuing to look at the same things we, you've already talked about, quality, dig into a little further on HOA covenants and where that goes. So that looks like, that concludes the homestead at Bryan Farm for this evening. Thank all of you for your input on that. And that brings us to a special use permit for Bennett Assemblage Apartments North. And this was continued from a, a meeting on June 18th, I believe, on the hearing. And since this is a little different than the legislative issues that we had before, I'm required to read this disclaimer and explanation of the difference, because this case involves an application for a special use permit, which requires a quasi-judicial hearing as opposed to the legislative hearings that we had before. So each council member is required to disclose whether he or she has a fixed opinion prior to the hearing that is not subject to change, and any ex parte communications, any close familial, business, or other associational relationship with an affected person, or a financial interest in the income of the case. We'll come back to that. This is a fact-finding hearing, and only competent material and substantial evidence that is not repetitive is allowed. Only expert witnesses, based on training and experience, may testify as to the impacts of property values, traffic safety, or noise levels. Council members must disclose discussions pertaining to the case or any information received outside of the hearing. The property was considered at prior council meetings in conjunction with the rezoning and the special use permit hearing on June 18th as well. Some ex parte communications are included in the agenda packet on pages 144 through 146, and that was a summary of comments that were made by council members and myself at the last hearing, and then translated in emails, which were passed along to, to the applicant. So I think we've covered that. Do any council members have any additional disclosures of ex parte communications? Okay, it looks like a no on that. That's good. Okay. All persons wishing to testify or provide comments must be sworn in by the town clerk. Police proceed to the back corner of the room to be sworn in. Anyone who plans to testify related to the special use permit. This is where we need a little cartoon to show everybody a little commercial about Coca-Cola or something, just like in the movies. Maybe we can sell that. Maybe, maybe a promotion for a local funeral home or something would be a good thing. Thank you for doing that. I also mentioned that the staff report is offered as evidence in the case and will be accepted into the record unless an objection is raised by the applicant or another person withstanding. And at this point, I'd like to recognize Allison Jones on her planning staff to give us the staff presentation, kind of bring us back up to speed. Or then again, maybe we'll settle for Jeff Trezenberg.
I, I offered to Ms. Jones, because she was out enjoying some family vacation time while a lot of this was going on. So I offered to give you all the update. So yes, we are continuing the public hearing for SUP SP 2210, Bennett Assemblage Apartments North. Won't spend a lot of time rehashing what was presented last time, and just focus on the updates since this was last presented to you. We did receive revised elevations that introduce a red brick, as well as a yellow fiber cement panel, as well as pitched roofs behind the projecting parapets. You see the new elevations here on this slide. They've also provided printouts of some other variations of, of these elevations. And so Ms. Miller is passing those out to you, and the applicant has some larger versions as well, if need be. And so Ms. Miller is passing those out to you and the applicant has some larger versions as well if need be. In addition to that, at the end of the recommended conditions, we had nine that were listed for you last time in talking with the applicant. We've, they're proposing these additional four conditions as an agreement between the applicant team and you all as the town council. So number ten would be that all multi-story buildings shall provide an elevator. The site will include a minimum of five EV charging stations. The site shall also include a minimum of twenty bicycle parking spaces. And then number thirteen is their commitment to the affordable housing portion, which was taken largely from what was presented by the folks at the East Garner Assemblage, Park at Garner, Village at Garner Station. And again, I would just point out here that there's a total offer of five percent of the units. All five percent essentially would be at a hundred percent or less and two percent of that five percent. So that two percent total would also be targeted further to those at eighty percent or less. So those are the four additional conditions. Recommendation remains the same to either find it meeting the criteria with a motion to approve or not meeting your criteria with a motion to deny. And that's all I have.
Okay, any questions from our council members, starting with Mr. Vance for Mr. Treisenberg? Any question, comments for Mr. Treisenberg?
No questions.
Mr. Dallinger?
A quick question, I might have missed it. What was the commitment on the housing for the duration? How many, like, is that permanent, is that twenty years, fifteen years?
Thirty.
Just want to make sure that's in the condition as written. Thank you, that's all.
Ms. Behringer? Mr. Singleton, questions, comments?
Just a clarification, I believe it's a hundred and seventy-seven units.
Yes.
Okay, and the minimum of five percent, which is eight point eight-five units, so I'm assuming to be nine units, at the minimum of nine units. I'm assuming that's it. Okay, just doing the math, it was uneven, so instead of minimums, I assumed it would go up to the next number, okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Matthews, questions?
Nothing this time.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. And I think we will hear from the applicant as well. If you'll please introduce yourself, sir.
Absolutely, good evening, Mayor Gupta, Mayor Proton, Vance, members of the town council. I am Bill Gosh, the attorney for the applicant. I want to thank staff for working with us through some revisions since the last meeting. I don't intend to call up any more witnesses, but we do have our team tonight to continue the dialogue from last month. We did put on our entire case last month, after which we received feedback from you all. And the case was continued, as you know, and in the meantime, we grapple with that feedback to make changes to the plan. I know the hour is late, so I don't want to be, you know, easily taking up too much time here, but I will take a moment to explain our thinking and describe some of the changes that we did make. The first thing to note is that the site plan is being considered under the old development code based on the date that it was submitted. That having been said, we took a look at the provisions within the new UDO and made some adjustments based on the direction the town is headed with new development. As a result, we have added a commitment to provide both EV charging spaces and bicycle parking spaces, neither of which are required under the old UDO, which the site plan is being considered. We also have added a commitment to have elevators in all multi-story buildings. We've updated our building elevations to include pitched roofs and more architectural features to provide relief in terms of colors, materials and visual breaks. And finally, we also have committed to providing affordable housing within the development. Specifically, three percent of the total unit count will be limited to families earning no more than a hundred percent AMI and two percent will be limited to families earning no more than eighty percent AMI. And that affordability period will last for a minimum of thirty years. That sums up the changes that we have made to the plan since last month. As I stated, our team is available tonight to answer any further questions you may have about the project. We do remain confident that our project meets all the requirements for your approval tonight and look forward to your vote. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions for our representative?
No questions.
Just a comment, it was an interesting meeting and, and you stepped up and done what we was asked. And I think you got a much better product, looks good, the renderings look really good, elevators and everything. So just a couple of positive comments, thank you.
And I think you said we have no individuals signed up to speak on this?
All of the individuals who signed in and were sworn in are representatives of either the applicant or town staff. So no members of the public have signed up.
Okay, that was my question there. Well, I would just make one, one comment to the applicant. It appears that clearly you were listening to the council last time. Thank you for coming in with many of the things that were suggested that are above and beyond. The elevators, for example, admit ADA requirements, this is a step above. As I get older, my knees get worse, I appreciate the ability to ride up once in a while. And not just for me, but my friends who are my age who are worse off. So I appreciate that. Likewise, the affordable housing that was mentioned last time, and this will not solve the affordable housing dilemma for the world, these nine or ten units. But I, I believe it's significant that if every apartment complex we have that's not in a traditional affordable housing community can make a little contribution that we can kind of spread the joy around a little bit, spread the love, where everybody does something to help. And as one of our citizens was telling me in a conversation on Saturday, he said, please just don't concentrate all of the affordable housing in one, one thousand unit complex like I've seen in other towns. It becomes a world unto itself and it's, it's not good for anybody. So thanks for taking a share of that, that's just my comment on that. That being said, I will close the, the public hearing. And as council members, is there a motion related to the approval of this special use permit?
Mr. Mayor, I find the application SUP dash SP dash twenty-two dash ten meets the town's eight criteria for special use permits. It's identified in Article three dot nine-two Delta. Therefore, I move that the town council approve SUP SP twenty-two dash ten Bennett Assemblage Apartments North with the thirteen site-specific conditions, nine recommended by the TRC and additional four agreed by the applicant and the town council and be listed on permit that will be prepared by staff.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews, for the motion. Is there a second from council? Second from, second, Mr. Vance, thank you, second from Mr. Vance. And I think I'll ask for a roll call vote on this important and sensitive quasi judicial hearing. Mr. Matthews made the motion, but I'll start with Mr. Vance's end. And if you are in favor of approving the special use permit, please signify by saying aye, aye or nay.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Dallinger?
Aye.
Ms. Behringer?
Aye.
Mr. Singleton?
Oh, I reckon I'll vote aye.
That was aye?
I reckon.
An unenthusiastic but clear aye.
Not very enthusiastic, but anyway.
Okay, Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
That's the vote of five to zero to approve the special use permit. Clearly, it passes unanimously. Thank you very much for your time and attention on this and listening to the prior hearing. And that brings us to the new and old business, and we'll move right along. This is not a quasi judicial hearing. This is a zoning text amendment to amend the Garner Forward implementation. And I believe we'll refer back to our planning director, Mr. Treisenberg, to give us a briefing on this and kind of get us up to speed.
Well, good evening again, one last time here tonight. Guess it's a good thing I'm going on vacation tomorrow, right? ZTA twenty-three oh-two is our last item for you tonight under new and old business. And I'm going to try to just give you a, a little different kind of overview of the text amendment package to hopefully familiarize you even a little bit more with what is in it. And have enjoyed talking with some of you about some of the individual components of it. And I will promise you to do my best to be thinking on my feet here at the end of it to help bring this to some kind of resolution here tonight. So just a little bit of history on the case. We first introduced this to you back in June of two thousand and twenty-three. While we were finishing up the rewrite of the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan, at that point, we pretty well had complete draft in place. We continued that discussion at the following month of July twenty-fifth and made some additional revisions to the package based on us finalizing that draft of the comp plan. Then we waited for the comp plan to actually get adopted, which it was in November of two thousand and twenty-three. And we brought it back for essentially a, a second fresh round of discussion at your meeting work session in March. At that, we agreed to set the public hearing for May and we conducted that on the seventh. We did identify some final minor revisions at that point. And that was presented to the planning commission at their meeting last month on June tenth. That was the version that you did receive in an email late last week, I believe it was. Nothing has changed since it was presented to the planning commission where it did get a unanimous recommendation for approval. And so we're here tonight to talk about any possible action, adoption or further discussion by the council. So I've tried to group these just in some slides, kind of step away from the, the details of the text and just kind of try to look at it a little more from a high level perspective. So there's a number of amendments related to parking issues. One is to set the administrative approval for parking reductions at fifteen percent as opposed to the current twenty percent. That does require us to have a sealed parking study by a licensed engineer in order for us to consider granting that at an administrative level. The reductions, though, we would add a clarification that it does not affect bicycle or EV parking requirements. Those will stay at an absolute minimum. So whatever the, whatever the bicycle parking and the EV station requirements are, those have to be met with no reduction. We would also propose that we're clarifying that we can share public, we can use shared parking or public parking as part of a project that doesn't, we, we can use that in a situation where we're looking at a redevelopment or a change of use to an existing site. Particularly, we think of this in the downtown area, where some of the uses downtown, they don't have enough space on their actual lot for parking. So they do require or do rely on that public parking or shared parking with an adjacent site. But clarifying that if they are using that, there is a threshold in the non-conformities that if you have a use that demands twelve or more spaces, you have to bring the whole site up into compliance. And so we've talked a lot in the past about not trying to overburden properties that are trying to, you know, put, be put back into use or to a higher and better use rather than have them sit there vacant. So that is one thing that's out there that could trip somebody up. But we want to use that to specify if it's parking that's actually on their site. That means that they have space to work with and so it should be done according to new, new standards. But not tripping them up to say, oh, well, you're using shared parking, you have to upgrade your site even though the parking is somewhere else. So that would clarify that. We would also be expanding our shared parking options for any kind of non-residential development in residential zoning districts where permitted. So if we do have those uses, whether they're religious institutions or nonprofits or office, where they are permitted in a residential district, we could allow for that shared parking as well. Again, trying not to overburden those areas with impervious surface that may only be used a little bit of the time. And then finally, also related to parking, we would need to establish a new parking standard for our new research and development use category.
I have a question on the modifications on, in our packet, it's on page one fifty-eight, but it's nine, three, three administrative modifications. And it's that clause where they're, they're granted modification, you know, showing us engineering, you know, study or something like that. But again, that word shall is there. And I guess my question is, how often are applicants coming back after a project's been approved and asking for that modification? And then the second part of the question is, are there situations where you found it to not be appropriate or where you'd rather not do it? So I'm just kind of get a feel, I don't want to tie the hands with the word shall, I get caught up with that.
Gotcha, gotcha. To date, I would say we've not had any that we've ever questioned. We usually talk about that at TRC and try to address it at that level and just say whether it's appropriate or not. Honestly, I don't know that I've really had anybody ever ask for a reduction outside of apartments, which we've kind of tackled that within the, the new parking requirements. So it's, and I've never had anybody come after the approval. It's, it's something I don't think that we would ever grant after approval. Again, we want to, that has to be approved on the front end.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thanks.
Mm-hmm. I made a category for landscaping. It turned out there was really only one thing related to landscaping, which surprised me. And this again goes back to the small parcels and our larger buffers. And just the fact that on those smaller parcels, those larger buffers quite often just eat up the whole parcel and requires them to get a variance. So this would then exempt parcels that are two acres or less from having to do the full new buffer, but to do half of the buffers, which is much closer to what the old ordinance required and would solve a lot of, a lot of major issues that we've run into. The third category I have for you was kind of all the things resolving around open space. So there's some little minor word changes that we made throughout the document just to bring additional emphasis and clarity to the active open space requirement. There's an amendment in there, again, kind of similar to the buffer issue. It can be tough for projects that are small to create a meaningful active space. We've, we've run into that with a couple of small subdivisions of like ten or twelve lots. And for them to get a real meaningful active space is challenging. The, the passive part is kind of challenging enough but doable. So we proposed again, kind of setting a threshold for that at twenty-five residential units in a project before that active open space kicks in. The amendments also would introduce a five percent open space requirement for non-residential development. Currently, there is no requirement for non-residential. And we've talked in the comp plan about plazas and other kinds of outdoor gathering spaces are, can be very much beneficial to the public at large in those non-residential settings. So we would introduce that five percent requirement. The comp plan also talks about trying to emphasize open space even more if you're close to a public park or a town facility and trying to build on that and create some synergies there. And so actually increasing the open space requirement in those cases by fifty percent. In certain instances, the comp plan talks about needing to use the open space more as a, as a functional organizational component of the development. So the amendment proposes to require those open spaces to serve as vistas or central spaces. I think you saw a little bit of improvement, for example, in the case that you had before you previously tonight in Homestead at Bryan Farms to a certain degree. And so we'd be looking to build upon that even more. We also talked about not having those private trails count towards the active open space, so we would be eliminating that. But we would be adding the flat open playfields. But we would be adding the flat open play fields of a certain minimum dimension within that. And then finally, requiring. I'm not really sure why I put that there, but requiring building material unity within developments of multiple structures. I guess I was just thinking about nonresidential development and some of the unifying things there.
Jeff, could you hit the one that says require fifty percent increase in open space?
Right.
Within a quarter mile, someone, I'm not understanding that.
Sure. So if you're, if you're, let's just take the Meadowbrook Park property as an example. If somebody were developing land that's a quarter mile from the boundary of the Meadowbrook Park property, we would ask for fifty percent more of that to be built or dedicated as open space. And what we would do is then in our discussions with the developer at the time, we would really target the parts of their property that are either adjacent to the park or closer to the park. Because again, we're trying to create an even more enhanced open space network that will connect into our park facilities. So really trying to emphasize and reemphasize where those parks are at and saying, hey, where we do have parks, we really want to see a little more commitment to open space to accentuate that and build upon that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for eliminating private trails from qualifying as active open space. Because it's not, yes, it is active because somebody can walk on it, but.
And that was, that was something that actually directly related to the the active space and why we, for those smaller residential subdivisions of like ten or twelve lots. We worked with at least, at least one, if not two in trying to make that active stuff work. And that was really the only way that we could come up with something meaningful that they could do, but then they would have to get credit for it. So by, by changing that to a twenty five lot threshold before that active space kicks in, it makes even double sense to go ahead and eliminate that. Then we have some amendments that are just related to uses in general. That first one would be to just add that new research and development use. Currently, it's part of the kind of miscellaneous light industrial. So we would give it its own category. We have several amendments that try to clarify the townhouse and apartment uses better and assign them to the appropriate zoning districts as the comp plan would suggest we do. We would add supporting nonresidential uses to the multifamily B district so that it could be more of a mixed use and particularly vertically mixed use enabling district. And also, we talked about adding specific uses to the activity center districts such as hospitals and and the research and development so that that zoning district could potentially take on some different forms depending on what the primary use in that district would be. Then we have some related to building form, and this is probably where the architectural unity should have been. We had here to extend the maximum building height exemption in the commercial highway overlay. Currently, it applies to areas that are east of McCormick out to the interstate. But again, we're, you know, the comp plan, we talk about there at North South Station, that being a BRT hub. Wanting to try to encourage more vertical mixed use. Well, you can't have vertical mixed use or a lot of it with a forty five or thirty five foot height cap. So we would extend that height exemption west of McCormick and kind of around the corner on seventy and four oh one down to Purser Drive. We would also look to increase the maximum building height in the limited access highway overlay, which is the overlay that runs along I forty and NC five forty. And we would allow that to go up to two hundred feet to support those higher, higher levels, areas of change that we're looking for. So long as the scenic corridor, which is that fifty foot protected buffer, vegetated buffer along the interstate is still protected. Then we would be emphasizing the multifamily A district as really the district to go to for small format multifamily. So that would be your duplexes, your triplexes, your quadplexes, your townhomes that are up to four in a row. Those types of multifamily scenarios. And then emphasizing the multifamily B, multifamily B district is those for apartments only, the large apartments projects as well as vertical mixed use with trying to get that further emphasis on the vertical mixed use. And then finally, clarifying the maximum block lengths as maximum block face lengths. You did see a good example of that earlier in Homestead at Bryan Farm. I don't know if you recall, there was kind of a, an area in the lower left hand portion of the site plan where they used the breaks in their single family homes to weave a trail through. It came from kind of the far western side of the property, the buffer area, through the homes, went through the pocket park, went through the homes on the other side of the pocket park, and then connected into the main greenway at the power line easement. So that directly speaks to what that block face requirement can allow and help achieve. And then we have some related to the review processes themselves. So we have some proposals in there for eliminating the SEP requirements. There's a couple of different types of that. The first one, we talked about in the commercial mixed use district. Currently, if a building wanted to exceed forty five feet, they would have to get a special use permit. But we talked about the fact that there is a built in control for that in that if they want to go higher, they have to increase their setbacks for each foot to be allowed to go higher. And the fact that that's kind of a self-regulating type of thing. So we propose eliminating that SEP requirement. We also talked about some economic development related exemptions specifically for certain types of development that the council might want to encourage, being research and development, hospitals, and ambulatory health and emergency care facilities. And then the third revolved around studying more of a tiered approach to the building size SEP requirements. So this would take the nonresidential threshold to any building that's a hundred thousand square feet or more. That would be the typical requirement, except that the threshold would be two hundred and fifty thousand square feet for any development proposed within the activity center zoning district or proposed as part of a development that's already been brought into the corporate limits by the council as part of an annexation petition prior to a decision on a site-specific development plan. So if that site-specific development plan came in prior to the annexation, then that two hundred, the two hundred and fifty would not apply. It would still be a hundred thousand square feet. But if you did decide to annex first and then entertain a site-specific plan, that requirement would go up to two fifty. And then lastly, we talked about for on the residential side as an incentive, further incentive to vertically mixed use projects that upper story residential dwelling units would not count against that two hundred unit threshold. If they still had, you know, two hundred townhomes or two hundred apartments on their own or two hundred single family as part of the project, it would still trigger the SEP. But let's say they had fifty regular apartments and fifty upper or a hundred and fifty upper story. Those hundred and fifty upper story would not count, and it would just be the fifty. And so therefore, a fifty apartment, so that special use permit threshold would not be triggered.
Explain that again.
Sure.
My first interpretation of upper story residential was all residential over commercial. The explanation you gave seems to be a little bit different than that.
Gotcha. So upper story residential by definition does assume that there is a nonresidential use on the first floor. So it wouldn't be, for instance, we wouldn't exempt the second and the third floor of an apartment building only.
Right.
Yeah. So if there, if there is commercial and office or whatever on the first floor and the residential is limited just to those upper floors, we would not count those for the SEP threshold.
But if it were a mix where you had fifty upper story residential and a hundred and fifty normal apartments, would that still trigger? Or would that become exempt?
That would become exempt the way this is written currently. But if it had two.
Just because they include some upper story residential, they get the exemption on maybe four hundred or five hundred other apartments.
So no, as soon as they got over two hundred apartments, just generally, the SEP would still be triggered just like it is now.
So if they had twenty upper story and then a hundred and eight, a hundred and eighty, they.
Right. That would not. But if they had, if they had two, as long as they had two hundred apartments. Again, the upper story ones classified and counted differently. As soon as they reach two hundred regular apartments without any commercial or office underneath, the SEP is triggered.
What you're saying is this commercial or whatever underneath, they can go up to two hundred and there's no SEP. Is that what you're saying?
They can go up to any number. Yeah.
What number?
Any number. So if they had, if they had a development that was all vertically mixed, had all ground floor, office, commercial, you could have any number of residential.
Without having the SEP.
Correct. Now, it could get so big that it might trip the hundred thousand square foot requirement or the two hundred and fifty thousand square foot requirement. So. Again, but the idea was is if we want to see vertical mixed use, we're going to be seeing that at a rezoning. Don't make it go through that extra SEP.
Two hundred, fifteen hundred square feet, not include that, that's three hundred thousand square. So it would forever be exempt. Unless they were small units, eight hundred square foot, maybe. But then just by virtue of that two hundred almost already exempts it. And that's just the square footage of the unit. That's not the actual square footage of the building.
Jeff, you want to remind what our current threshold is that trips the SEP now before you introduce this change? That might be a helpful starting point.
So it is two hundred residential units, period. That's what it is currently.
That's if the land's currently already zoned, that permits the use. That's if it's already permitted as a use.
And even after a rezoning.
So right now, when you entertain rezoning requests for residential, they go through the rezoning process. And then if there are more than two hundred residential units of any kind, they have to do it an SEP. And you've seen in some cases, it's almost the next month right after. It's almost running concurrently, although the state law says we can't run them, you know, simultaneously anymore. So this would go from just doing a unit count to then looking at the size of the building, right?
If it were mixed use, yes, yes. So just, just.
Somebody could build five hundred apartments beside an existing residential, single family subdivision, as long as it had mixed use on the first story.
On the first floor, if, if the zoning allowed it and it did not exceed the building size thresholds.
So Mr. Singleton, another way to think about this is the goal would be to try to get all the conditions that are desired to control that through the rezoning. And if, if that is accomplished through the rezoning, then for projects that are meeting particular strategic goals within the comprehensive plan, like the upper story residential, the true vertical mixed use, then you're not having to do the SEP. So that would, that would be evaluated at the rezoning point. And so the goal here would be that we would never get to a point where the, the number of units would be not in an appropriate place because you would consider that through your rezoning process.
Yeah.
But also keep in mind by eliminating special use permit, it eliminates us imposing what we perceive to be necessary conditions to meet the eight conditions of a special use permit. Whereas if it's a legislative rezoning, they have to agree. So while it sounds simple that we can handle all of it in the rezoning, they would still have to agree to those changes. So the special use permit always gives us a little more flexibility, as we just witnessed tonight, to request changes that are holding that project to the standards of the criteria that we evaluate them on. Whereas just a rezoning is a very different process. And we may or may not get the, so if you have concerns about size next to something or height or it might not get handled in the rezoning, but it might be able to be handled in the special use permit. We're giving up public input via us on projects by getting rid of and giving exemptions for special use permits.
Yeah. Yeah, there's, there's definitely a trade off. Again, we tried to focus on things that we thought were warrant, might warrant an additional incentive. But that's, you know, that's, that's a subjective thing. So yeah, so yeah, that wraps, those are the different, kind of the four different types of review process, SEP exemptions that are in the package. And then just lastly, throughout the document, to update cross references accordingly, any minor updates to language and related subsections to match or reemphasize the amended language elsewhere. And then, of course, there's a few revisions to definitions as needed as well. So at the Planning Commission, we presented this to them and entertained questions and comments. There was some clarification about those revised special use permit thresholds as well, particularly how they applied to certain nonresidential scenarios, and we went through that with them. They indicated that there was just a continual, continual desire for staff to keep looking at some of the parts of our UDO and how it relates to those open leftover spaces at the edges of development and thinking about how we could potentially minimize those leftover spaces and where we did have them to try to make them a little more meaningful. And then there were just some expressions of, to the staff for comprehensiveness and appreciating the work. And so they did adopt a consistency statement that you see there that we, the Planning Commission finds ZTA twenty three oh two directly responds to various needs to align the UDO with recommendations of the comp plan. And therefore, this request to amend the UDO is consistent with the town's adopted land use plan. And their recommendation was to approve. That motion was made by Mr. Carson, seconded by Mr. Jefferson, and passed unanimously. Just as a reminder, you're not required to adopt a statement of reasonableness when approving or making a decision on a text amendment package. We do have the recommendation there either consistent and approve or inconsistent and deny. And there's always ways that we can further slice and dice. So we would encourage any feedback and we'll try to do our best to assist you through.
Thank you. Are there further questions from Mr. Treisenberg?
Yes. No. A question on the use chart in the six one three uses is not listed. And then the actual use chart is use table that's in there. And it says remove the following from the use flex space light industrial, and that's the research and development moving that out. So that means it gets its own use category.
Correct.
But I don't see an updated use chart to know where that is permitted or it requires a special use permit.
Okay.
I'm missing it.
Yeah. So if you look on, I have the draft ordinance printed out for me, so I'll just direct you to page one hundred and seventy. You should see it there under industrial manufacturing, warehousing, waste service, transportation use category. Research and development being added. It would be added to the CMX district.
I was looking at the summary of changes further up in the document, not the actual full.
Oh, not the actual table.
I see it now. Okay. So it would be permitted in the. I, I see it now. Okay. So it'd be permitted in the C M X.
The L I and the H I.
And.
Light industrial and heavy industrial.
But not in the A C.
How did we miss that?
That was a big, a lot of conversation about that.
Yes.
I, I don't see it. So it's not listed in what's here as being in A C, which I would define with, and I probably shouldn't have said anything. We should have voted on it. Cause that would alleviate some of my other concerns, but. That easily going through with a finer tooth comb, because that would have been a big omission.
Yeah.
Um, which again, I probably shouldn't have said anything about. So that, I see it now and that's up there. I do have some questions about, um, the research and development category. And it's in, again, it's inclusion in A C, which was in the draft. Um, and the definition that was pulled, was pulled from federal listing or something. And so I guess my question centered around a couple of things. Um, one, what sort of impact does that have on what are economic development opportunities of which we are aware and some of which we may not be aware in the future? Um, that's a question I have. And then sort of a question still outstanding for me is how does that change make us more competitive? So the whole point of making the change was to open up opportunities versus other peers. And so we're doing it for a specific category. I'm very curious as to either what the process and procedure is for other municipalities that they'll have special use permits or have them or execute them in a different way. And then specifically for how we're trying to execute this, the ambulatory and hospital, we all understand. Um, but for the other, is, is that comparable? Um, and open up the opportunities that we want.
Gotcha.
Um, cause that's kind of here, we need to be competitive, but it's hard to know what that landscape is, because I don't have it explained to me. And so want to know how it fits in the landscape and context of, of what we have and the land we have and all that kind of stuff. So.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be one thing that we would need to do a little more research on.
But I think the original theme of, of pulling that out separately into its own category was based on peer communities like Holly Springs who have been very successful in using that zoning, uh, to attract some of the type. So, so it's not exactly mirror and theirs, but the concept came from peer communities who have been successful at recruiting types of industry.
And, and I'd like to see that within also the context of their, their special use permitting process. Have they eliminated it for that category? Have others? And is that what they're, they're doing? Cause again, we know kind of what we're trying to do on the hospital side. Um, kind of want to make sure we're pretty concrete and under due diligence of unintended consequences without also missing opportunities that we want. So. Um, that's where my thoughts are at, uh, at the moment.
All right.
Other questions or comments?
Yes. So currently, if a, if a land, the property is already zoned and permissible use comes in, let's go to the project on highway fifty. You passed the V A hospital and go up Nancy on the left. The townhome project where that property was resigned back in the eighties. That was a certain number of units, less, less than two hundred didn't trigger, trigger the S U P. And the townhome project was approved by S A P because it was allowed to be approved by S A P. Cause that's the way the old system, excuse me, the current U D O allows.
Right.
Um, that's, that's the issue, the concern I have about units because I don't think any of us are excited about that project. I know I've heard from so many people that are excited about their project. I don't like when the driveway comes on that project and I know how busy fifty is. And that's one of those that raised a red flag that says, how did this happen? And I tell people, it was rezoned back in the eighties, I think along with the Indian Creek park project. It was all tied in with that and wanted family.
Yep.
And, um, that's why it wasn't permitted. It was a permissible use. And if you want to blame us because we allowed it to happen, it's permitted and they put there what was permitted. So that's, that's the red flag when I throw up that just sticks out like a sore thumb. It sticks, it sticks out like a sore thumb where it is. Um, that's the concern I have there. And again, anytime someone could build five hundred units, just because it has mixed use from the bottom and not have a S U P, that just raises a lot of concern. And that's allowed. I have some issues with the, uh, I'd like to, I'd like to talk with the manager, not, not now, about a couple of these things also one on one, uh, and get some feedback from the manager's perspective on some things. But, uh, anyway, that was the one I, I'll have a hard time going on with.
Uh, I might interject here that these are very valid concerns and very legitimate questions to be asked. And even though we've been working on this particular project for a year, according to our records, uh, and even longer, I think there was a special task force that involved some citizens, some developers, et cetera, as we looked at these things. And I think this is really the first major amendment to the U D O and the long range plan. This, this is challenging. This is big. It's extremely important. Uh, I see before us, we, we have two possible motions, and I think there is a third motion. Uh, as much as I hate to be the one to say, let's don't make a decision tonight, I'm just going to mention that it is conceivable that this is complex enough that we won't have another, uh, work session or, or another chance to ask these very important detailed questions for so many moving parts. And while this is second nature to Jeff and John and Jody, uh, and they do this every day and it's, it's a language. There's a language that most of our citizens and many of our council members, including me, are not as fluent in. And I understand that, that the concern that's been expressed, we don't want to just open the barn door. We, we want to have some control to know when we're opening the barn door. Uh, with that, that being said, I'm just throwing out that as much as I'm always in favor of moving ahead and getting it done, this may deserve one more round of detailed study at, at another work session. We have one scheduled for two weeks. Uh, I'm just, I'm not making a motion. I'm not allowed to make a motion. I'm just throwing out that that could be an alternative motion.
Sure. And we're also prepared, um, based on the feedback. Um, I've kind of been preparing a few scenarios in my mind, um, potentially to adopt the non-controversial things and to be able to take out the things that you still have questions on. Um, so, so far what I'm kind of hearing is stuff related to the S U P and the use table. Um, so if, if everything else, let's just say if everything else were to be agreed to be okay, um, I have those sections identified in the ordinance that, um, we could direct, uh, you to extract. And we would rewrite the ordinance, um, to just approve the parts that are, that you're comfortable with.
Okay. So I think I'll rephrase that and put that as a question to council members. Uh, is anyone here confident enough that you could pull out the more controversial or the more, the ones that need more detail? And, and pass the others? Or do we want to look at the whole thing? We're gonna, we're gonna, it sounds like one of the options is we could look at parts of it later. And if we do decide to do that, I would really want us to target a timeframe. Such as at, at the end of two weeks from now, work session, we've decided pretty much what we want to do. And then we can pass that either on a consent agenda or with more discussion that day for six meetings. We, uh, we have to move ahead, but we don't want to panic. So there, there's, there's several ranges of things we could do here. And I'm looking for suggestions from council members. Which, which way we should go.
Well, let's make sure it's the August sixth meeting and not the April sixth meeting. Cause I might be a little stretched out like you said, you said Aprils and August.
One question that Jeff is that for the non-controversial items, are those things that you two have been having conversations with applicants about and they're sort of waiting and?
Yeah, there's up and, up and down the spectrum from the small stuff to the big stuff. There's people that are kind of just, you know, they're waiting to a degree. So yeah, it's not just on that end. It's all over the place, but there's, there's both for the small stuff and the large.
This is a, I think, a town attorney would have input on it as well. But I mean, I'm, I'm, as long as we can, I think the pull out that a special use permit and the research development elements and the rest of it, I don't really have any concerns with. But I don't know how we do that.
So your, your comment is that most of your concerns have to do with the special use permit part of this.
And the research and development. Which is, I'm glad there's now a definition. I do appreciate that.
But which is part of that special use permit section?
Yeah.
Yes, and it's own use table as well.
Yes, yeah, but it's close to that. So you're suggesting if that were out, we could approve the remainder of it. We're moving ahead and then focus on that for our two week, uh, review at the next, uh, work session. And that's just a thought that you're having and ready to have a thought.
Yeah, on the commercial highway Everly district, a couple of things, Jeff, on the height, it says maximum building seventy feet. That, that it's not, it's not related to stories. It's related to height.
Right.
What it could be. But it clearly on the D, it says, and this is underlying, the limitations do not apply to property located west of McCormick Street on seventy. McCormick Street is between I grew, between Wake Med Emergency Room is past that up towards forty, correct?
McCormick's over by IHOP. Um, that area. Wayside Furniture.
Okay. So anything located western McCormick along seventy. So then it goes, it's from there all the way to forty.
So, yes, today, that, that, that height exemption exists today from McCormick to forty. And so we would be extending it west from McCormick over to North South Station and then down four oh one to Perser.
Okay, but, but it says the height, the height limitations do not apply to property. And there's places of the seventy foot, so something can be taller than seventy foot there. It says the limitations do not apply. Am I reading this wrong or reading it? Am I understanding this incorrectly?
Correct. So you, you could, where it exists today, you can go higher as long as you're not within two hundred feet of residential.
Three hundred, it says on here, three hundred feet.
Yes, three hundred feet, sorry.
All right.
So that would still apply to the extension area as well. So you wouldn't have anything super, super tall next to.
We're not gonna have a seven store building inside Greenbrier.
Greenbrier, correct.
But we could go down, uh, where, where I mentioned the Wake, where Wake Med Emergency Room and they built another hospital and they tear that down. You can put one there because it's not close, not within three hundred feet of a single family attached sign.
Right.
Okay. I just want that clarification because, okay. All right. I understand that better now. I go along with the special use permit is the, is there's some concern in getting that understood and clarified.
Okay. That being said, uh, Mr. Delinger, would you like to make that into form of a motion? Or would have some other?
I was, I was listening and acknowledging, I'm good. Okay.
Would you like to make a motion as you were just describing?
And if you wanted to exempt those parts out related to uses and the special use permit thresholds to discuss at the next work session, um, in the draft ordinance, that would be sections two, three, six through eight, and seventeen.
So we would be voting on those to approve those.
Uh, do not approve those, do not approve the rest. Yeah.
Two, three, six through eight and seventeen.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve. I gotta get the number. C T. C T, A, A dash two three, dash two three.
Zero two.
Zero two, uh, with the exceptions of sections two, three, six through eight and seventeen. Is that right?
Yep.
Could I clarify in ordinance twenty twenty four fifty two eighty six?
Yes, what she said.
Okay, so I think we understand the motion. Uh, does, does any council member need more explanation on, on the motion Mr. Delinger's made? Mr. Delinger's made the motion to approve these with the exception of the more complex or interrelated S U P. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vance. Uh, that being said, uh, is there any further discussion on the motion that's now been seconded? Okay, hearing none, uh, I'll, I'll call for a voice vote. Let's go out on a limb here. Uh, all those in favor of accepting, uh, Mr. Delinger's motion to approve this minus the S U P related issues, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed by nay? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. Uh, thank you for your patience. Thanks for everyone's close attention. Even though this has been going on a year, everybody has studied it hard. There's been changes within that. It's complex material. I'm glad we could get some passed here tonight. And then I promise you, uh, Mr. Developers and Mr. Planning Staff, Miss Planner Staff, we will do our best to learn everything we can and answer all of our questions by two weeks from tonight. So that, uh, a week or so after that, on August the sixth of the meeting, uh, we, we can make a final decision on those complicated pieces. This is important stuff. Thank you for all the hard work that you've done. And I believe that concludes, uh, that item on the agenda. Hallelujah. And let's move right along to committee reports. And I think if we bear down on it, we can get this knocked out pretty quickly before we move to our closed session without calling another recess. So that being said, I recognize, uh, council members, uh, for any committee reports or council member reports. Any down this way?
No, we, we need to recognize Ms. Harrison because she's got a status report here for us on projects. The quarterly capital project.
I believe that's part of the manager reports. So right now, we're just getting the committee reports. And then we'll, we'll get back to the manager reports. And I think she's going to call on Ms. Harrison for staff presentation. Is that correct?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. We just have three quick reports, uh, that we want to share with you. First is our quarterly capital report. And I'll ask Ms. Harrison to come to the podium to, uh, provide a few highlights of our capital projects.
Good evening. Um, it's good to see you all. It feels like it's been a while this time for some reason. I guess taking a meeting off and I did sneak some vacation in there. So, um, tonight I just have quarterly capital project report to share with you. Um, these quarterly updates seem to come quickly. It feels like we just talked about this, but, um, you have your, the report in your packet, which has updates for all of the projects. We won't go through all of them tonight because it would take a long time. Um, but we'll go through some highlights and then of course I'm happy to take questions on any of them that you might have. All right. So, um, a, a few things, we've had some movement on some projects. Um, the White Oak Roundabout is one that we will finally be starting construction on. Um, looking, looking toward early October for a notice to proceed. Uh, we have selected a contractor and awarded that construction contract. Currently, the utility, the final utility, um, companies are relocating their facilities before we, um, get out there to start construction. And then also because that is a project that has lap funding, there is a lot of last, um, final approvals from D O T that we have to get, um, which has been going well so far. So we're looking to October for starting construction of that work. In the stormwater section, uh, we have been doing construction on the Forest Ridge Road, uh, culvert repair. That work is planned to be complete in September, but might even finish up in August. It's been going pretty smoothly. Um, we were able to also add some addition of some sidewalk replacement in that area. Uh, we, we're gonna add a handrail along the culvert for safety along the sidewalk and adding a, um, ADA curb ramp there as well. So a few things to go along with that project to just sort of complete the, the street and the culvert and the whole area. Then moving along, uh, on the Meadow Park Dam, Meadow, Meadowbrook Park Dam improvements, um, we, if you recall, we were halted on that. Uh, the draining of that dam due to some permits that we, um, did not have in place. So we have received those permits now and look to early August, uh, we anticipate restarting the dam breach, um, to complete that work. After that dam breach is complete, then there will be a six month drying period where we see what environmental, um, state the area is in before we decide what the next steps are going to be for that area. And then, um, one more to highlight, the town hall annex. We have also, um, accepted bids for this project and we're looking to start construction in August or potentially early September. Um, we have completed the demo of the former police building. Um, you probably noticed because it wasn't there when you came in the parking lot. Um, that is, that is complete. Tomorrow will be the walkthrough to, for the permit closeout, but it has been, uh, removed. So. Um, that is good to have done ahead of starting construction on the renovation of the new building. And then a couple of highlights on the N C DOT projects in Garner on your last page. Um, we have almost under construction, the bridge at fifty and seventy. Uh, we had a pre-construction meeting for that that we attended, uh, with DOT and they expected construction to start sometime after July fourth. So, um, it's a little vague, but we are to be informed when they have a start date. They have, um, told us that they'll let us know when that is and will be included in their construction meetings as they go. Yes.
When they start construction, are they gonna be, are they gonna build another bridge or will, what will the closure situation be during construction?
So that one will be done as they call it a detour in place. So they'll do, which is similar to probably how you've seen them do a lot of the five forty construction. They build basically a parallel facility and then move traffic there before they demo the existing bridge. Um, so that, I think that was something that the town was pretty adamant on when, um, that project was being planned because it would have been such a, a rough detour for that area. Um, so there, of course, there's always impacts from construction, but hopefully it will be fairly minimal. Um, and it looks like with the way the timing's working out, there will be no construction happening there before the Garner Road sewer project that Raleigh is doing is complete. So at least we won't have both of them going on at the same time. And then in the list of projects in planning and design, the only small update I have is that I learned today that project at the top, the fifty and Timber intersection improvements. Uh, that date has been pushed to October twenty-third of twenty twenty-four. So a few months, um, pushed back on that, but everything else is still dated the same. Um, and then before I take any of your questions, I have just a couple of things to show you on our website. I think I have it pulled up. So this is the, um, capital improvement program page, the main page that's within the engineering department website. Um, just as a refresher, first of all, the report that you have in your packet is located here under project status report. And we'll make sure that that's updated with the newest one. Um, also a reminder for any, um, residents who would like to take a look at that. Um, a new item on this page is the capital improvement program projects map. That's a mouthful, but easier to click on than say. Um, so this we worked on with. Uh, the G I S specialist and the planning department and set it up fairly similar to what you see in the development activity map. Uh, except with our capital projects, so. We have, um, them color coded similarly to, to how they are in the development map, just a little bit different categories. Being that the pink is anything in, um, like a planning phase, green is design, orange is construction, and then blue is complete. We're just keeping kind of the recently completed projects on there until they're removed. On the left, they're designated which project type they are, a street, sidewalk, stormwater, facilities. And then either in the table here under the view or by clicking on the project. In the map, um, you can also visit the project website. Um, so just another resource to, to visually see what projects we have going on. Hopefully if there's, there are things that people drive past and they're not sure what's happening, this is another way for them to be able to, to look for that, so. We just, just rolled this out, so I think we'll have a few tweaks to make still, but overall, um, I think it will be helpful. And then the one other piece on the website is, I wanted to point out, is next to all of our project pages here. We do have a box for N C D, DOT projects in Garner. This was previously on our website, but it was buried a little bit further down the page and it was admittedly quite outdated. So it has been pushed up, so it's a little bit easier to see. Um, and then we've updated all of these links with the most recent information that we could find on DOT's website, so that it's linked directly to that. Um, of course, a lot of the projects that are further out in the timeline and are in a very preliminary phase, they don't have public information for yet. But any of the ones that are very active in design or, or getting close to construction have information there.
So for, I, I don't see the Bryan Road White Oak intersection in either DOT or our project. Is that, why is that? Is that because it's too soon or is it?
Um, really because it's not really our project or DOT's project, so that's kind of a strange one, um, and we can think about.
Strange category.
Yes, it might need its own new category, um, because it's really a project that's being done by the private developer, but there is involvement from both of us, so. Um, we could think about a way to maybe represent those other things that are going on in Garner that maybe don't fit into one of these categories. But it are still things that people would want to know are happening.
Thank you.
Private public partnership.
If, and, and to dovetail off of what Councilman Dellinger mentioned, we, we have also some DOT projects that are, uh, happening. For example, the one where, um, between Buffalo Road and Ryan Road, uh, with, with that particular project, with that huge improvement going on there, how we can capture that within the street.
Yeah, so the, um.
Probably good to have as well.
The, the, the N C fifty is this one you're talking about between Bryan Road and Buffalo?
Right.
Okay, so that, um, that one is on this list. It's the, it's at the bottom of. This one, and that will go to.
It's already, it's already up there, okay.
Yeah, that, that was one that, it was not on there previously, so, um, I added that one to the box. Um, so this has information from DOT. This is, I think, their public engagement site, but it has more information than the others.
Okay.
Um, that shows those improvements.
Okay, we, we just, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you. Flip back to that screen just to sort of show where those DOT projects are floating on the right there again.
Yep, yep, they're just in this box here. And that is about all I have for tonight, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about projects or anything related.
Wow, who would have thought all this going on right here in this little town? Fantastic job of putting it together. Thanks for pointing out the website where it's available, information to the public, to the council members. Fantastic. Keep up the good work.
Can we ask a question?
Sure.
On the projects in planning, I keep seeing the Vanderel Springs Road at railroad crossing separation. I'd sure like to see a diagram of how that's gonna happen.
I have not seen one either, and I, I keep half expecting it to disappear off the list, but it's, it's still there.
Alright, specific question is, uh, in regards to, uh, Centennial Park. Uh, this talks in here about the playground, but specifically Centennial Park, I mean. That's a different project and maybe I'm just not focused here, but I'm just trying to figure out, I mean, it's not like it's forever they've been designing this. I mean, we're supposed to get sixty-five percent. I mean, it just seems like it's at a snail's pace. Am I incorrect here? And that's not, may not be under here, but I'm just, that's a big project and it just seems like it's stuck in the mud.
The Centennial Park playground?
No, 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 the whole project. Not Centennial Park playground. I'm sorry, I'm correct.
Jürgen Park, okay, gotcha.
My fault, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to throw that in there. Jürgen Park, phase one. I mean, I'm just sitting here thinking, it's town project, news, ninety percent plans, the plans are at ninety percent supposedly, correct? It seems like we've been working on this forever.
Yeah, it's, um, it's definitely not quick. Um, I mean, it's, it is, it's a large project. There's a lot of pieces involved. Um, I know it was fairly recent that this project went through the T R C, which is our committee that reviews private development projects. So our public projects, um, go through that process just like private ones do. Um, so that has gone through one round of review with the T R C. And then in addition to, you know, taking comments from the project staff, um, on town staff, they, they have to incorporate those comments as well. Um, so that's what they're working on now is continuing to apply all of those comments. Um, that ninety percent plan phase can feel a little long because once you're done with that, you're really moving to final plans. So it's the, it's the piece to really button up all the remaining comments and anything else that you want to change before they're finalizing, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think it's progressing satisfactorily, but, um, it does, it does feel long and slow.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Mayor and members of council, um, our finance director, Mr. Beck, could not be with us this evening, so I'm gonna briefly talk about a few highlights from the quarterly financial report. And of course, if council has any questions, happy to answer them or follow up with Mr. Beck directly. So, uh, the report you have before you this evening is our fourth quarter report for F Y twenty-three through twenty-four. Um, the numbers that are presented in your report are very preliminary as we are still working on year end closing out. And so as you look at the report, um, you'll see between this report and the next report, uh, a lot of changes that will happen. Because, um, we are still in the process of year end closing. Uh, year to date, the town has collected approximately eighty-six point six percent of our estimated revenues. A few of the revenue highlights includes, uh, most of the property tax revenue has been collected. We typically collect that in November, December, and January. At the end of June, we had collected over a hundred percent of budgeted property tax revenue, so that's very good, uh, for us. And, um, always excited to see, um, it at at least a hundred percent, and in this case, we're a little bit over. Uh, sales tax through, revenues through May show some modest growth of three point eight. And so we continue to watch this and monitor this, um, as we think about the F Y twenty-five budget, but also the future budgets as well. Uh, parks and recreation and cultural resources, user fee and facility rentals have grown about nine percent over the previous years. Really indicates, um, the, the, um, the passion and the interest that residents have in using our parks, recreation, and cultural resources facilities. And then also, as we've shared with you in previous updates, the unrestricted interest on invested and depositive monies have far exceeded our revenue projections. And this is because we still are in a very high interest rate environment that may be changing here in the new fu, near future. Um, but because of that, we, our revenues on our, those interests, um, the, the interest income and revenue has outpaced what we hit budget for, so that's also good news. Uh, I'm happy to answer any other questions that council may have this evening, but once again, I just want to stress that this is sort of the preliminary information. As we finally close out everything for F Y twenty-four, the next quarterly report will have all that detailed information available for you.
Thank you.
And the final, um, report under manager reports is our monthly talk of the town report, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Hodges to do a brief review of talk of the town.
Alright, thanks, Ms. Miller. Um, on your talk of the town report, the first item about the highway project being added to the website that the mayor mentioned at a previous meeting. You heard, uh, Ms. Harrison give an update on how that's been updated on the website. I would just add to the, to, uh, thank the staff for the work that they've done to update that. And just ask, uh, the, the council that whenever you get requests or questions from citizens or anyone, feel free to forward a link to that page to them. Our director to us, and we'll be glad to share a link to that page for any of these type of project updates. Um, similarly with the budget update, uh, your report had a link to the new online budget book. So, uh, thank you, congratulations to the budget team and, uh, Sarah Warren, our budget director, for the, the really good work in implementing a new tool that provides the online budget book. It's a really fantastic looking book. If you've not already had a time to take a look at it, I'd encourage you to do that. Uh, we all have, uh, processes underway for both our H R director process as well as our assistant town manager backfill, so there's an update there for you on those. A fire merger update that Ms. Miller provided, um, on the work that has started for phases three and four of the evaluation. And the team of staff from the town as well as Garner Fire have been created to review and provide recommendations on the merger process. Um, still working towards the goal of spring twenty twenty-five on the effective date of July one. Um, and, and recommendation or some suggestions from Ms. Behringer and the mayor, uh, working on ways to try to have a consolidated place to have community events. Uh, we've worked with encouraging our town staff as members of the Chamber of Commerce to include our events on the chamber's calendar that is available. Uh, we're also working with our economic development partners, uh, that affiliated with the town who are also members to do the same. So please, um, take a look at the chamber's event calendar, uh, anytime that you're looking for a way to try to see if something that you're interested in or something that you may be planning has other things on the calendar. Uh, we did close on our town hall financing last week for the found, town hall annex. So Ms. Harrison mentioned that was moving forward and that financing did close as expected. Uh, our downtown food truck update, uh, in addition to the upcoming food truck radio that is scheduled for Friday night of this week, weather permitting. Uh, the D G A has also added Food Truck Friday, so they've got, on every Friday night beginning last week, uh, they have about three or four food trucks on Main Street to provide dining options so that when people come out to visit all the wonderful other establishments we have on Main Street, uh, there's some options for food there. So that's a new program that they've rolled out. And then lastly, I want to mention that our population estimate, uh, has crossed a, a fairly major threshold. Our population number now starts with four. It is forty thousand, oh eighty-two. Uh, keep in mind that this is an internal estimate that staff prepares monthly and they add, um, certificates of occupancy times, uh, estimated dwelling, uh, nu, of persons per dwelling to the last, uh, certified number that we have from the census. So just keep in mind that you're gonna hear census numbers until there's a new census that may have different, different populations. This is an internal estimate only, so we can't use it for funding applications or anything that we do, uh, with, say, the federal government. But it is the, the number that we track, uh, has now crossed the forty thousand threshold, and we wanted to draw your attention to that. You'll see the stats from the Garner Info Monthly Analytics, um, and even though, uh, we are still in the, the summertime, we're really seeing a decline, uh, in tall grass and weeds. Uh, some of our, our other, um, things like potholes and trimming vegetation have surpassed that. But all in all, still a fairly low number of, uh, issues that our staff is working and staff is responding to those very quickly. So thank you to all the staff, uh, that are responding to those in multiple departments. Uh, this is the quarterly report, version of this report that does include the development statistics. You'll see there that we continue to have, uh, consistently rapid growth, uh, with over four hundred C O's issued in Q two of twenty twenty-four. So the quarter we just ended, uh, and you see some other statistics there that show the number of single family and townhome dwellings. Um, some of the cost of residential construction, keep in mind that these are often based on estimates by the developer and builders, so they are not tax valuations. And we're working to, to have additional numbers that we can tie to the, to the product once they're on the tax records. And then the last chart there, uh, really, uh, visually depicts, uh, the number of average permits, uh, issued and inspections by quarter. And you'll see there on the right that for, uh, for twenty twenty-four, quarter to date, exceeded eight hundred, um, for both inspections conducted and permits issued. So the inspections team, uh, is working very hard. Uh, kudos to them for still being able to maintain well within the state mandate. And with, still with, uh, close to a hundred percent of those inspections being conducted next day. Uh, and they are moving forward with some of the most recent, uh, staffing opportunities that were provided in the budget that was just adopted to be able to be prepared for those continued increases. If you have any questions about these, uh, I'd be glad to answer those for you.
So Mayor and Council, those are all the manager reports for this evening. If there's additional questions or follow up, we're happy to provide that on any of the topics that we presented.
Great, a lot of great information. Thank you very much. Great presentation too. The graphs and the charts, very, very helpful. With that, we'll move to attorney reports.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I don't have a formal report tonight. I just wanted to remind council members that, uh, we presented the code, draft code of conduct and ethics to you at the June work session. And council members committed to providing comments, uh, back to the legal department by the end of July. Right now, I've heard from one council member. So once we compile all those comments, we can revise, you know, send you a revised draft of that. And then you can decide when you want to consider it for adoption or for further discussion.
Thank you for keeping that project moving along. Civility is, is a watchword these days. We want to make sure we're doing everything we possibly can to encourage that in all aspects of what we do. So, so thank you for keeping that moving. And also we have one more chance for council reports. Any council members want to make a report?
I got one.
Okay, there you go.
Really two things, uh, kudos to the staff and everybody for one heck of a third of July. It's gotta be the biggest one in my opinion we have ever had. And it was well organized, uh, unless you use a V I P pass and you're the last guy out with, with a garbage truck, so. But, uh, so being that, secondly, uh, we do have our own farmer's market down right across from Lake Benson Park, home of the alpacas and goats. And, uh, uh, this past weekend, they said this Saturday was better than the Saturday before. And they're open Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and it is being jam packed. And it's worth the trip to go out there and see, you know, the fresh produce that they have out there. And, uh, they're looking forward to working with the town on some things and, uh, being a part of us and, uh, and, and, and more dynamic things. So this is, uh, so it, it has been very successful, so I encourage everybody to check it out and it, it's worth your, your time out there.
Excellent. Yeah, you talk about your private-public partnership. That's a totally private thing. We're, we're totally public right across the street and beside them. But somehow it's all come together better than any of us could have ever dreamed. What, what, what better use for that spot? It's, it's like an annex to the park, but we, we're. It's like an annex to the park, but we, we're usually not allowed to have large hoofed animals in our, in our park.
Right.
And they've got not only alpacas, they have llamas and goats and New Zealand ice cream.
Absolutely.
Unbelievable things. It's just, just great. And we're very happy to have that. And one more comment here.
Well, I've got several, actually. And of course, as we remember, you may remember years ago, that was the farmer's market down there anyway, remember? Before we had White Deer Park, they had their shelter down there. And that's where they raised the corn, the blueberries, some of those blueberry bushes stood down there, the corn that used to graze where, what is, uh, autumn oats and all that. So a lot of people don't remember that. Of course, everyone, very few people remember that Lake Benson Park was a hog pen and a strawberry farm.
The old-fashioned farm.
That's right. Again, I'll kudos on to my third, this is an email. Great work, great effort by everyone. Really well received. I like the fireworks when we get one encore, then they waited a minute and do another one. That's the way to do it. People get up and get leaving, then you do it again. They like that. We had the traffic calming email from the gentleman and Ms. Miller responded that she got the same email from Mr. Vance and y'all would contact the gentleman about procedures that may have to take place if, if we seek traffic calming out there. And also, I had a citizen contact me to tell the town staff, he appreciates them. When they respond, he had a concern, went to a certain department and the department responded back in an appropriate period of time and addressed the concerns. He said, "It's nice to have things addressed." This is someone who retired from state government. And I jokingly said, "So are you telling me I'm supposed to say from one bureaucrat to another when they did a good job?" He said, "Well, you can say that if you want." He said, "But they did a good job." And he appreciated the, the feedback that he got so promptly and answering and taking care of the, couldn't take care of the issue, but answered the questions that hopefully will lead to taking care of the issue. And appreciated that. So I just want to pass that along.
Yeah, nice to have some good news.
Very highly of the people that were involved.
Okay. Any other last-minute reports from council members? If not, I will accept a motion to adjourn the public session so we can reconvene in the closed session next door. Move. Motion made. Ms. Behringer is her second.
You had to cite the, you had to cite the, the, the general statute.
We just did the closing, the regular.
We just closed in the regular session, then we'll reconvene, but help us out over here.
Technically, you go into closed session, you don't have to, you don't stop this meeting.
We don't stop. Y'all stay. We'll be back in an hour or so. We're going to take a recess while we go do the closed session. We'll come right back and we'll call you if we need your input over there. I wanted to personally walk out here during this special recess and thank each one of our three intrepid citizens who passed endurance tests. They stuck in here for three hours now. And you're welcome to stay another hour or two with us, but we're going to kind of, do I get hit the gavel? So let them know it's time to go. Just, just once, just to.
We haven't made the motion for a closed session though. We still need to motion.
We need a motion to go into closed session.
We need a motion to go into closed session.
I'll amend her, I'll amend her motion citing NC Statute 14331811A3 and 5 Consult with Attorney regarding condemnation litigation and to discuss the acquisition of a property. Does Ms. Behringer accept that amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So we have a motion just amended and is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of that motion to move to closed session, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay? Passes unanimously. Stick around. We'll be back. Thank you. Closed session. And I might call on our town attorney to give us a report on the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. After discussion regarding the acquisition of easements needed for the Aversboro Road and Garner Road sidewalk projects by negotiated purchase or eminent domain, council did adopt Resolution Number 2024-2589 to authorize the acquisition for the Garner Road easements and Resolution 2024-2590 to approve acquisition of easements needed for the Aversboro Road project.
Excellent. Excellent. Good work there. Anything else we need to cover in here this evening? Here none. I think we could ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move?
Move by Mr. Vance, seconded by Ms. Behringer. All in favor of adjourning the regular session, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay? It passes unanimously. The regular session is adjourned.